Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, January 24, 2022. This is the regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board and Reorganization Meeting, beginning at 6:00 PM. And Barbara, would you please call us to order?
Absolutely. First of all, Happy New Year. This is our first gathering. The following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, amended 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during the state of emergency. Adequate notice of this meeting have been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press and the City of Asbury Park website. A copy of this notice is on file with the Board Secretary. The notices and conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the Guidelines of Virtual Meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Please join me with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, and I will now take role call. Mayor John Moore?
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Here.
Michael Manzella?
I know he's here.
Just give him a sec, he's unmuted. Thank you. Yes, we can hear you. Thank you. Jim Henry?
Here.
Thank you. Jennifer Souter?
Here.
Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Eric Gallopo?
Here.
Rick Lambert?
Here.
Barbara Krasak?
Here.
And I would like to welcome our new alternate members, Mr. Daniel Schanameo. Did I say that correctly?
Shana Mayo.
Shana Mayo. Thank you.
Yeah.
And Juanita Barnes?
Hi.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Juanita? Are you here?
I'm here, yes.
Thank you very much. Alright. Okay, let's get started. Jack, I think we have a couple of housekeeping items as far as the virtual meetings. So on the screen now is Exhibit B1. It is the 2022 Planning Board Annual Meeting Notice, which I've republished to indicate that we are going to have virtual meetings until further notice. So we'll mark that into evidence as Exhibit B1.
Thank you.
And this is, I'm sorry, this is from the Asbury Park Press. And this next one is the same notice in the Coaster as well.
Next, B2.
B2? Correct. And then this is a publication that ran on January 19, 2022, in the Asbury Park Press, related to the current meeting, stating that this meeting will be held virtually and with the access information and the two agenda items listed. And that will be Exhibit B3. Any questions about those?
I have.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, and here is the agenda for the evening.
The swearing in of the new members. When did we talk about that? We're going to do that before?
Yes, we're going to do that now.
Yeah, we're going to do that now. So first on the agenda is Eric Gallopo. Mr. Gallopo has been appointed as a regular member of the Planning Board. Congratulations, Eric. And Eric, did you have a chance to print out your oath of office? And would you, if it's up to you if you want to read it? If not, you can just?
Yeah, you don't have to read it. Just show it to me so I can get a visual with your signature, please.
With my signature?
Okay. Great.
Alright.
Okay. And you've read the oath and you're willing to live and abide by its terms?
I am.
Thank you very much. Next?
Next is Mr. Daniel Schanameo.
Okay, let's get Mr. Shiana Mayo on.
I'm here.
Okay, there you are. Dan, could you please hold up your oath and show me your signature?
Yeah, I don't know why it's not showing, but.
There we go.
Interesting.
Do you see it now?
You know, I gotta get rid of the virtual background.
Oh, yeah, he's, okay, yeah, it's the virtual background. That's alright, we can see the paper.
We can, we can, we accept it. You signed the oath of office?
I did.
And you agree to live and abide by the terms contained therein?
I do.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Alright, and moving on, next is Ms. Juanita Barnes.
Okay, can we get Juanita up? I don't.
Juanita, if you'd just speak.
Can you see it?
Yep, there we go. Wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you show your oath with the signature?
She did, Jack.
Oh, okay, I can't see it, so I'm groping here. As long as you tell me it's been done, that's fine, and that you're willing to abide by the terms contained in the oath.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, Barbara Krasak?
There you go.
Good. And are you once again willing to live by the terms of that oath?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay. And Michael Manzella?
Yeah, I don't believe I got an oath, but I'm willing to take it.
Oh wait, you're a class three member, correct?
Yep, that's right.
Okay, so Class 1, 2, and 3, I don't need oaths of office. You're appointed every year by the council.
That's right, thank you.
Just the Class 4 members, and I think that takes care of the Class 4 members. Is that correct, Madam?
Yes.
Okay, so we're through that Section F?
Okay, I believe that the next item is to the resolution for an executive session?
Well, no, we're going to, why don't we, aren't we going to appoint a temporary chair?
If that's fine by me.
Yeah, let's do that, so that whoever goes in can conduct the session, okay?
Okay.
In the past, last year, temporary chairperson was Barbara. Temporary Board Attorney was me, and temporary secretary, I think, was Michelle because Irene was out on maternity leave, however, she has returned. So if we could get a nomination for those three temporary appointments, that'll get us into executive session.
This is Alexis. I nominate Barbara Krasak as a temporary chair, Irene as a temporary secretary, and you as a temporary attorney.
Second?
Second.
I'll second that. Michael Manzella made the second, which is fine. Jim Henry is, that's fine. Okay, roll call, Irene?
For all three, correct?
Yeah, do it all.
Mayor John Moore?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Gallopo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Barbara Krasak?
Yes.
Daniel Schanameo?
You don't take more than nine votes.
Okay, we won't. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so you're good. So now you go into, you can vote to go into executive session, and I submit a resolution.
Right, I have the resolution. I didn't know if we have to approve the resolution.
Well, we'll take a motion to go into executive session, and then second, just a voice vote, and then you can complete the resolution.
Okay, I'll make a motion to go into an executive session?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Barbara Krasak and a second by Jim Henry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
None, I have it.
Are those coughs, oppositions?
No. It's just me gagging.
You can go into exec.
Okay, and we'll do the resolution afterwards?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and the purpose, well, you signed, the purpose of the executive session is to discuss board appointments and nominations for the upcoming year, and that's fine.
Just one second, everyone. I am going to send, so just to go over this process, I know it's confusing. I'm going to send you now to your emails the link to the executive session. You're going to leave this meeting, and make sure that you've left the meeting, and that your screen is not on. And then you're going to join the executive session meeting. And when you're finished with the executive session, you're going to go back to your email. You should have an email at 5:00 PM today with the link to this public meeting. Does that all make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, see you on the other side. I'll be letting everybody in.
Okay.
Except for our professionals.
Right, yeah, I'm out.
Okay, here is the link.
So the rest of us will remain in this session, correct, Irene?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you.
And we will just sit here and wait.
Sing, dance. Talk about dogs.
Hopefully they'll edit it out.
I was gonna say, we are recorded.
Yeah, we are.
We're not saying anything out of order.
Actually, I should probably put that on the screen.
Do we take a roll call, or what?
Yes, yeah, you need to take a roll call.
Yes, take a roll call. Oh, wait, I don't see Jim. I don't see Jim Henry. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, well, just wait one minute. There he is, and we'll just wait for him to connect, and then I'll take, actually, I can start now. Okay, Mr. Henry, you can hear us?
Yes.
Okay, great. Mayor John Moore?
Here.
Yvonne Clayton?
Yeah.
Michael Manzella?
Here.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Jennifer Souter?
Here.
Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Eric Gallopo?
Here.
Rick Lambert?
Here.
Barbara Krasak?
Here.
Daniel Schanameo?
Here.
And Juanita Barnes?
Here.
Thank you, everyone is here.
Okay, so now we move forward to the nominations and the appointment of 2022 offices?
Correct.
Okay. Can I get a nomination for Chairperson?
I will nominate Barbara Krasak. This is Eric Gallopo.
I'll second that. Jim Henry?
Thank you. And Mayor John Moore?
Yeah.
Oh, you have, no discussion, just a vote? Go right ahead.
No, we did, the discussion happened, the discussion happened during the executive session.
Sounds good to me. Okay, go ahead.
I mean, is there anything to discuss, really?
I don't know. But go right ahead, call the roll.
Mayor John Moore?
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Gallopo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Barbara, oh, Barbara, you can't vote for yourself. And Daniel Schanameo, oh, I'm sorry, do we need to get the alternates? No, right?
Hmm, no, we have a quorum, we're good. Actually, one alternate can sit in because you've lost one member for this, so you could, if you want to get a full nine votes, go ahead.
Thank you. Daniel, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much for your vote of confidence. I'd like to nominate for Vice Chairperson Rick Lambert.
Second.
Okay, I have a nomination by Barbara Krasak and a second by Michael Manzella. Any discussion? Alright, Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Gallopo?
Yes.
Barbara Krasak?
Yes.
And Daniel Schanameo?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Alright, procedurally, would it be okay for us to nominate all of the professionals in one foul swoop? Because we've already had the discussion during our executive session?
Sure, if you name everybody and their position.
I will do so. I vote, I mean, I move to nominate for Board Secretary Irene, Board Attorney Jack Serpico, Conflict Attorney Beekman Brothers of Ocean Grove, Board Planner CCH, Conflict Planner TNM, Board Engineer Insight, Conflict Board Engineer TNM, and Board Recording Services APTV.
Beautiful.
Second.
I have a second by Michael Manzella, was that you?
Yep.
Thank you. Any discussion on any of those? And thank you all for the nomination. Okay, Mayor John Moore?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Gallopo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Krasak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Yes, thank you.
Okay, regarding committees, we already have, I mean, for the Design Review Committee, I nominate that we have, please, if anybody is not interested in serving, please let me know. Currently on the Design Review Committee, we have myself, Rick Lambert, Eric Gallopo, and alternate Alexis Taylor. Does anybody wish not to serve on that committee? Okay, my proposal is to nominate those four people to be on the Design Review Committee. My motion.
Second, more.
Okay, I'll take John Moore a second. And Mayor John Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes, can I vote? Yes.
Thank you. Eric Gallopo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Krasak.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Alright, for the Bylaw Policy Committee, we currently have Mike Manzella, Alexis Taylor, Yvonne Clayton, and Jim Henry as the alternate. Does anybody wish not to serve?
Barbara, since I will be going on maternity leave in March, I'm happy to open up my position perhaps to one of the new members of the board or anyone else who would like to serve on the Bylaw Policy Committee.
Okay, so then what we would do, and if it's okay with Mr. Henry, is that we would move Mr. Henry up, and we would create an alternate. Would anybody else like to serve on the Bylaw Policy Committee? Anyone? No one? Okay, I guess that I'll be the alternate. If no one would like to serve.
Oh. I'll serve as an alternate. I'm sorry, Barbara, you have enough on your plate.
Okay, Eric will then serve as an alternate for this committee. That's who I nominate, then. Mike Manzella, Jim Henry, Yvonne Clayton, and Eric for alternate.
Great. And Jack, can we do the other, do we do each committee separately, or can we do both together as a vote?
They compose a different membership, it might be easier to just do them separate.
Okay, let's just do it separate. Alright, so we have a nomination by Barbara Krasak. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Michael Manzella. Okay, Mayor John Moore, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Gallopo?
Yeah.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Krasak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, for the Master Plan Committee, the folks that are serving currently are Barbara Krasak, Yvonne Clayton, Jennifer Souter, and an alternate of Eric. Are you all okay with remaining on this committee, or do we have any concerns? Now is the time. Okay, alright, sounds like we're all good. I make a motion for the Master Plan Committee for Barbara Krasak, Yvonne Clayton, Jennifer Souter, and Eric as an alternate.
Can we get a second?
Second.
By Michael Manzella, thank you. And Mayor John Moore, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Gallopo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Krasak.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Okay, the next item up for discussion is the 2022 Planning Board Official Newspapers. They are the Asbury Park Press and the Coaster. Do we need to have a vote on that also?
Yes.
Okay, let's, I make a motion for it to be the Coaster and Asbury Park Press.
Second.
Okay, I have a second by Jim Henry. Mayor John Moore, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Gallopo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Krasak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, and the hits keep on coming, the adoption of the 2022 Planning Board Meeting Schedule. I move to adopt the existing schedule that we already discussed probably a couple of meetings ago, but this is a formal adoption.
We have it marked as an exhibit, Irene?
Yes, it was, well.
Yes.
Yes. B1 and B2.
Perfect, that's good.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton. Alright, Mayor John Moore?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Gallopo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Krasak.
Yes.
Okay, I think that does it for the reorganization question of this meeting.
It does. Alright, so now let's get down to real business.
Well, not just yet.
Not just yet?
We still have minutes and resolutions.
We're getting to the minutes and the resolutions, okay? Okay, alright, I'm gonna get a motion to approve the minutes of December 6, 2021, unless someone has any concerns about those minutes that you have not already mentioned to Irene.
Move it, Mike Manzella.
Second. Alright, John, second.
I have a question. Eric, were you in attendance at the December 6 meeting?
Yes.
I think so.
That's fine. I just wanted to confirm.
He was. He just recused himself from his first application.
Perfect, okay, got it. Thank you.
No problem. So I have a motion by Michael Manzella and a second by Jim Henry. And I'm not gonna take role for this, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Minutes of December 6, 2021 memorialized.
Okay. Alright, regarding the resolutions, I believe that, can we go through the ones that we have no concerns on?
Whatever order you please.
Alright, let's go with Interfaith Neighbors, 302 Atkins Avenue. Can I get a motion to approve that resolution, unless someone has any concerns?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Yvonne Clayton and a second by Rick Lambert. Mayor John Moore?
Yeah.
Irene, do you have a list of eligible voters?
Yeah, I'm sorry, hold on one second, I need to bring that up. Okay, alright. Everyone is eligible for this resolution. There are no abstaining members. Alright.
It's Jenna, I thought I was.
Yeah, Alexis and Jen are not, Irene.
Oh, okay, Alexis, you are not, we have you listed, I'm sorry.
We're working on Interfaith Neighbors now?
Yes, so this is Interfaith Neighbors, so we're gonna make a correction to that resolution. It does list Alexis Taylor. So we'll strike that.
Jack, for the record, this is Jim, for the record, I was not there for the first hearing, but I did. So you're, yeah, I already noted that in the file. You signed a certification, so you're good.
Alright, so the members who are not eligible to vote on this are Alexis Taylor and Jennifer Souter. Alright, Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Eric Gallopo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Krasak.
Yes.
Thank you. The resolution.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, resolution memorialized.
Check the last email I sent to you, I may have omitted Alexis from that group, and Eric was with a question mark in red, and I took the question mark away.
Yes, so the changes that we're gonna make are we're going to strike Alexis Taylor from the members who voted, and confirm Eric Gallopo.
Correct.
Alright.
Okay, next one?
Next, AP Shore Holdings, 810, 812 Main Street. If I like to move to get a motion to approve, unless someone has any concerns about that resolution? Okay, I'll get a motion, I'll, my motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Barbara Krasak and a second by Jim Henry. Just one second, please. Let's get this up. Okay, Yvonne Clayton is abstaining from this resolution. That's all I have. Alright.
Hold on, Moore was not there.
Yeah, there's only six members, Irene.
I can give them to you if you want.
No, no, I have them in front of me, Jack, I'm sorry. Okay, so we have I'm sorry, okay, so Yvonne Clayton, John Moore, and Michael Manzella are abstaining. Alright, the other members are Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Gallopo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Krasak.
Yes.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Okay, the next, uh, the next resolution is for David B Duncan, um, 1317, 1319, Springwood Avenue. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution unless someone has any concerns about the resolution that they have not already voiced.
Uh, Barbara, just again for the record, this is Jim, uh, I, uh, did not attend the first hearing, but I did watch the, uh, uh, the, uh, AP TV, uh, way back of it. And you signed a certification. Uh, you never sent that to me, Jack, but I'm. Okay, all right, we'll get it to you, okay.
Oh, I think, I think we have, we have it, um, Mr. Henry, we had two certifications by you.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
Duncan, okay, so the members, um, that were recused from this were Eric Gallo and, um, I'm sorry, uh, Jennifer Souter, um, will abstain. Uh, am I missing anyone?
Uh, I have six.
Oh, and Rick Lambert, sorry.
I have six eligible members.
That's it, Rick Lambert, all right. Okay, so Mayor John Moore?
Yeah.
Uh, Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Gallo? Oh, I'm sorry, Eric is recused, um, and Barbara Krzak.
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, let's move forward to, uh, the two resolutions that they're, they are still up for discussion. That's 316 Main Avenue and Linus Holding, they are two resolutions that are, that are essentially, uh, locked together. So, um, maybe, uh, Jack, if you want to explain where we are.
Uh, I, I'm gonna need Donna, uh, to jump in along with Mr. Karas. Uh, yeah, uh, going through the changes requested by Mr. Karas along with changes from CCH, uh, kind of got at a loggerhead where I, I did not, was not clear the, 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 um, the issue of the EV stations, whether or not they're going to be installed for sure, and if they are, how many? And what is the exact effect on the parking requirement and then subsequent to that would affect the parking contribution? So, uh, if we could, uh, Donna, are you there?
Okay. There she is.
Okay. All right, Donna, since you're gonna actually talk, let's, let's get you sworn in, you raise your right hand, you solemn swear, any testimony about the given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you, uh, state your name, affiliation with the board, quickly.
CCH Board Planner.
Okay, why don't you tell, if, if you can, uh, tell us where we're at with this from your office's perspective, then we'll get Mr. Karas to come in and give us the information so we can fill in the blanks.
Um, okay, so I guess the, the question is, how many spaces will actually be pre-wired? And it can't be four.
Say that again, it can't be four?
You're not allowed to have, uh, greater than 10% and there's, the requirement is 36, so 10% would be 3.6, so four spaces would exceed, uh, the 10% restriction.
So, actually under the statute, it specifically states under Section F that you round up. So if we do 10%, we may do more, but we're only entitled to a credit of 10%. So if it's 36 parking spaces and then we do, which comes out to 3.6 specifically under the statute, it states you round up, which rounding up would be four. So we're entitled to a credit of four.
Okay, hang on a second, let me pull up Michael's analysis. Um, so do you actually have a commitment to four? What is it you're actually committing to?
We're gonna do at least four, we may decide to do more, but all, but we're only entitled to a credit of 10%. So that's why the language I put in there is that we're gonna do, we're getting a credit for 10%.
Okay. Subsection F, is that Section 66?
I believe, I don't have it right, but I'm pretty sure it's Section F under the EV.
It's, it's Section E.
E, okay. Michael, you have, Michael Manzella, you have it?
I just pulled it up and from an email, but yeah, it's Section E that says minimum parking requirements and you round up.
Okay, and what, what law is that you're quoting from so that I can reference it in the resolution when I correct it? You know?
You're asking me?
No, no, you pull, if you, you just quoted Section E, is it, does it reference the statute? In the, if not, I'll get.
55D dash.
66.20?
Point something.
Okay, all right, I'll, we'll find it, okay.
Hey, Jack, it, it, I believe it's already in here on the screen, it's.
Yeah, 55, 66, 20E.
Yes, what is the E, right?
There you go.
Do you want me to specify the?
Yeah, if you can put it in for now, we'll make sure, I don't know if it's uppercase, lowercase parentheses or not, whatever it is.
Okay.
Okay, so then we know around, we know you're gonna put in at least a minimum of four, perhaps more, but for the statutory requirements, for whatever, uh, credits you get, it's, it's 10% max and, uh, 36, 3.6 rounding up to four, so we know you get a credit for four. Uh, and then we just have to resolve, uh, whatever the resultant fee is for the parking contribution fees. Would that be a fair assessment? Yes. Donna?
Oh, pardon, sorry, I was just, uh, looking at the statute, yes, E3, okay, um. So four would be the max permitted for credit.
Right.
So, you okay?
No, I'm just trying to parse the other thing he said, okay. Okay, so I think yes is, is the answer.
Okay.
To the question?
Yeah, all right, that's fine, that's good, so then we'll just figure out the calculation based on these credits correctly stated now, um, and I think everything else was pretty, pretty much agreed to, so we'll clean up, um, I don't, I don't know if we're gonna have to put the, uh, the, the amount in here. Michael's resolution, I think, certainly looks different than this, although Irene, is this the result, resolution after that discussion we have with Michael today?
Yes, so there are only two items, um.
So it'll be this one, which we've just fixed?
So we are leaving the 36, uh, spaces required after the four credits.
I assume that's correct.
Is it, is it correct?
Donna? Where is this?
Number four on the screen?
It's on the screen, the, uh, the text in red.
I'm having trouble reading it because the stupid gallery is covering part of it.
Oh, you can change your view to speaker view.
Design exception, remove All Street Park, 19 spaces are required or 36 are required after giving credit.
Do you, do you wanna add maximum of four EV spaces?
I think it should be a separate item, I don't wanna this is already getting.
I mean, we have the option, if we want to add more EV, I mean, I would.
Yeah, I'm only concerned about the appropriate credit, Andy.
Yeah, it shows a credit of four.
Yeah, so the 36 are required after giving the credit for four EV, if that's the calculation, there's no reason to change it.
Yeah.
Well, 36 are required regardless of the EV.
Yeah, why are we putting, I don't understand why the credit is being discussed here.
Number four.
All right, then we, because Michael Sullivan said the credit is not four, the credit is 3.6. So we want to make sure that the credit is correct, and now we know that it's four, not 3.6. Now, if you want to separate that for some reason, we could, well.
Yeah, I think, I, you know, again, the regardless of the EV, there's a requirement of 36 spaces.
Yeah, I agree with Donna.
Providing 19, end of, you know, just dead stop.
And that's. No, it, it can't be, because we get credit, so we don't pay the additional fees for the.
We're talking apples and peaches.
Consideration.
I'm, I'm sorry, that text was supposed to be, um, the total 32 spaces after
Yes, 32.
Giving the required, uh, credit for four EV spaces, so the, so the, uh, requirement is 36 spaces. Um.
And what I'm saying is that.
32 spaces.
What I'm saying is that there should be a separate.
Is this?
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
I don't have my language in front of me, but I did the calculation, what I had submitted, which I think was accurate in my resolution about the amount that was required and then the amount after taking off the credit.
Yeah, but that's a different, I'm with Donna, number four.
I think we need to, yeah, have a, a paragraph that says how we get.
What are the requirements?
Yeah.
I can separate.
Have in there 19.
Number five is the applicant proposes EV. He's gonna do four spaces, which are the max permitted to receive credit, therefore, you know, now it's 32 and his.
Because the requirement, the require, you take the credit into account to get the.
Andy, I, I see what you're saying, but that's in number seven on page four.
All right, I, I know what you're saying. There's, you're gonna distinguish between the total amount of spaces required regardless of this and then how we got to a net amount
Right.
here, right, so we would put in, in, let's say, a new number of four, uh, the total amount of parking required for the project, uh, before EV calculations is X. XY are provided, then go on to the next one that says, uh, you have to give credit for the four EV spaces pursuant to the stat- statute quoted. The parking space requirement is Y.
That's fine.
It still gets us to the same place, it distinguishes between both, both items and, and, and go from there. And if we don't do it now, we can do it tomorrow morning when we're not under the gun doing it.
Okay, so we're adding a new item, it'll be number five, and it'll, it'll state both projects after giving credit for four EV spaces pursuant to NJSA blah blah blah, parking space requirement would be 32 spaces.
Okay.
Or whatever, whatever language you want to.
And I thought we were gonna reference the actual, we, all right, we'll let, we're gonna add another paragraph in that talks about what the pro- parking requirement would be if we didn't have the EV calculation involved, and that will be in number four. And then we're gonna go on to a state that'll read in logical fashion that the actual requirement after giving credit for the four EV spaces is, uh, 32.
Correct, yeah.
Still got a variance for the difference, and that doesn't affect the variance, it's still the variance. And then the calculation is, is purely mathematical based on the formula. Is that correct? Andrew, and, uh, makes sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. Donna?
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
I got it, I, I hate, I hate to have a question, but I do.
Okay.
When we're saying that we're, there are, we're receiving credit for four EV spaces, now, can I assume that that means four EV, not EV ready, but true EV spaces that have the connection, that have the ability for someone to park and plug in?
Whatever the requirement is under the statute, we're entitled to the credit for, I don't have the statute in front of me, what it requires in order to do, but whatever that requirement is, on how you make it an EV space will do. But it's a statutory requirement, and we'll comply with that statutory requirement to get the four credits.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I don't have the language in front of me to look.
Are we approving this resolution tonight?
No, you don't have to, I'll clean it up in the morning
Okay.
and resubmit it and go from there. Andy, is that okay with you?
That, that's fine, but you can't alter from the statutory requirement.
No, 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 I know, I'm going to, I'm gonna clean it up the way it should be, a statement of what the variances are that are required. Secondly, the effect of the four EV and the fact that the four EV stations will be installed pursuant to the requirements of the applicable statute in order to get the credit, as long as you, you gotta comply with the law, as long as you do, you get the credit.
Right, and we'd like to know what the law is.
Okay, all right. All right, so we can, we can figure this out. I, I can clean this up in the morning rather than sit here and try and redraft a resolution.
No, yeah, we, we don't have to do that, the, the question is, is that, is there anything else that we have any questions about for this resolution so that the only outstanding items are these?
Well, uh, uh, Irene, did you have, you've made all the other changes that we discussed today?
Yes, so the only other, the only other items were on page four, number seven and eight, which apply to the same.
Yeah, it's the same thing, it's just a matter of conclude, taking it out to its logical conclusion, and what's the financial responsibility?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which will be part of the changes that are being made tomorrow.
Okay.
Uh, Jack, while we're doing this, and to clear this up, I voted against this, I see in here, in the last paragraph, you have me listed as, uh, a affirmative vote.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, but I did vote affirmatively for the 700, uh, application.
Okay.
The companion application.
Really, you voted against this?
Yes.
Yes.
And John Moore?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay.
Now, but I did vote affirmatively for the 700, uh, the companion, uh, resolution.
Okay. So.
That one is correct, as far as, as I recall.
The 700.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so can we, um, are we okay, can we move on?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, on, I guess there's page four, number seven and eight, so where it has blanks, when this comes back before the board that can vote on it, obviously I can't, those blanks will be filled in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I assume we're gonna also table the 700.
Yeah, because they're both, they're in power material, they're both, one, one is convert, dependent upon the other and vice versa, so we should, but we should adopt them both at the same time.
Okay. Do we need to vote on tabling these?
Uh, voice motion is fine.
Okay.
Motion to table the two resolutions to, uh, correct them, uh.
Move it.
Well, okay, Jim, Henry is.
Jim Henry made the motion and.
I'll second.
And Barbara Krzak, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, the resolutions for 316 Main Avenue and 700 Bangs Avenue, um, will be tabled to the next, uh, Planning Board meeting.
Okay, good, good.
Okay, um, do we have to, uh, pass the resolution for the emergency, I mean, for the, uh, the meeting we had, the executive session meeting, or no?
I think you already did that, you just have to complete it. You already took, you already passed a motion to go into executive session.
Correct.
Yeah, and that was based on that, uh, written resolution that adopt, you know, will formalize the, the move, the motion to go in.
All right, so we don't have to do anything?
No, no.
Okay, all right, can we now move on to, uh, the referral from council?
Yes, let me get.
All right, here we go, all right, um, tonight we have a discussion about, uh, a council referral of redevelopment plan for 1201 Memorial Drive, and Michelle Alonso, uh, takes the stage.
Let me just find the agenda, please.
Before we.
Go ahead, Mayor.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, before we start, I'm gonna recuse myself from this discussion, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, um, okay, just so the board, is the board aware of the statutory criteria that we have to employ in order to, uh, to do our task on this? Anybody, I'll, I'll read that very quickly. Okay, this has been sent over to us, there's a packet that everyone has from the mayor and council, uh, I guess it was resolution, uh, referring it over 2021-516. Uh, under the redevelopment law, it's quite simple, prior to the adoption of a redevelopment. Prior to the adoption of a redevelopment plan, or in this case rehabilitation plan, vice versa, or revision or amendment thereto, the planning board shall transmit to the governing body within forty-five days after the referral, a report containing its recommendation, recommendations concerning the plan. The report shall include an identification of any provisions in the proposed redevelopment plan, which one are inconsistent with the master plan and recommendations concerning those inconsistencies and any other matters that the board deems appropriate. The governing body, when considering the adoption or the amendments to the plan, shall review the report of the board and may approve or disapprove or change any recommendation by a majority of vote of its full authorized membership and shall record in its minutes the reasons for not following the recommendations. Failure of the planning board to transmit the report within the required forty-five days shall relieve the governing body from the requirements of this section of the law. Nothing in this section shall diminish the applicability of the provisions of subsection D, which I'm going to read shortly, of this section with respect to any redevelopment plan revision or amendment. Subsection D provides essentially all provisions of the redevelopment plan shall either be substantially consistent with the municipal master plan or designed to effectuate the master plan. But the governing body may adopt a redevelopment plan which is inconsistent with or not designed to effectuate the master plan by affirmative vote of a majority of its full authorized membership with the reasons for so acting set forth in the redevelopment plan and the referral. So it's essentially the same burden that you have with most development ordinances that come over. Some have a forty-five day provision, some have a thirty-five day provision, but they all reference that you're supposed to take a look at it in conjunction with the goals and purposes set forth in the master plan, cite the inconsistencies or say that they are consistent, and you have the ability to add in any other comments that you wish uh and feel are appropriate. And with that, let's get Michelle sworn in.
May I ask a question before we start? Sorry, half. Um, so can we just, for the clarity of the board, what is the date of referral, the date certain of, of referrals?
I think Michelle's gonna go over that, is that correct, Michelle?
Yes, um, I don't think I need to.
The, the night, the, just, the, the resolution was certified by uh Melanie Harts Grove on December ninth, two thousand twenty-one, however, the referral, the caption page indicates that on Wednesday, December twenty-second, uh, I think the rest, the matter was referred over. Michelle could clarify that in her testimony.
I'd just like to make sure that we're fully aware of the exact date of the forty-five dates.
That's fine. Let's get Michelle sworn in.
Of course.
Michelle, you saw my swear testimony about to give this matter, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and your affiliation with the city and the floor is yours.
Michelle Alonso, Director of Planning and Redevelopment for the City of Asbury Park. I'm also a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey.
And just one, one more thing before we get started, Michelle. I just wanna be clear that since John Moore has recused himself, that means our first alternate can come in and will be able to vote on this when we are ready to vote, and that's Daniel?
Okay.
Okay.
So the, the.
I'm sorry to interrupt one more time, Michelle, I really apologize. I also think it's an important point to note that um my, my home is a direct, I share a property line on two sides with this particular lot, however, since it's not an application by an applicant, I do not believe that I have a conflict in participating in the discussion related to the creation of a redevelopment zone.
I would agree with that. Um, when and if this ever comes before the board as part of an application for development, you would have to step down because you've been noticed within two hundred feet and any comments you make would be made as a general member of the public. If in fact, this, this goes back over to the mayor and council, if you were to attend any of those meetings and give public comment, you would be doing so as an individual citizen, not as a representative of the planning.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware.
I'm fine with that. Okay, Michelle, floor is yours.
Right, so to answer the first question, this was adopted by council on December ninth, two thousand twenty-one. It was referred to the planning board on December tenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay. All right. All right, so we're just about at the forty-fifth day. Okay, no problem. Let's go.
Okay, um. I'm going to do a screen share.
Is this of the packet that referred over?
Yes, although this is a summary, in other words.
Why don't we mark the original that referral documents as exhibit C one? And then you can refer to what page you're referring to in your presentation.
Hmm, okay. Yeah, I may have to switch this up a little. My presentation, it's, the words are verbatim um in your packet, but it is a um more of a summary, but I will, I will. I'll do my best if not.
Irene?
Yes.
Do you have the original document refer, uh, referring?
I, I do, yes.
Can you, let's mark that as C one, C one. City so that we have a record, an accurate record of what's been sent to us? You know, consisting of uh, I don't know, twenty-five or thirty pages here?
And we will mark that as exhibit C one.
Okay, fine, and then Michelle, you can refer to whatever uh you want to in your presentation.
Okay. I um. Everyone sees a map?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so this is a redevelopment plan based on the city's area in need of rehabilitation designation. The whole city was designated by previous municipal councils an area in need of rehabilitation. That enables the municipality to create redevelopment areas based on the rehabilitation designation. The property owner of twelve oh one Memorial Drive made a request to the municipal council for a tailor-made redevelopment plan for their proposed project at twelve oh one Memorial Drive. And that is why I'm presenting to you tonight. You have in front of your screen um a area map that shows the location, I hope it's clear. The location is Fifth Avenue Memorial Drive and Fourth Avenue. Um. I was gonna say what the acreage is, but even I'm having, I'm having a little problem seeing it on my screen, but.
One point five five acres.
Thank you, Eric. Um. This is the, the location shown on the, on the uh, the tax map. So this redevelopment plan is project-specific. It's based on a specific project for this site only and it would require the municipal council to enter into a redevelopers agreement before the, if adopted, if, before the applicant comes to the planning board for an approval. One of the basis, bases for the municipal council sending this plan to the planning board and supporting this project is that there will be twenty percent affordable housing as part of this project. So this redevelopment plan, I have in the screen in front of you, the, the basic bulk standards. The maximum density permitted would be seventy-seven dwelling units per acre. Front yard setback of zero to five feet from the property line and a rear yard setback. It applies to all interior lot lines of twenty-five feet. A maximum building height of fifty feet, four stories excluding penthouse, but a penthouse, basically a smaller fifth story would be permitted. The maximum building coverage would be eighty percent. The maximum lot coverage would be ninety percent. And there would be a minimum open space area of fifteen hundred square feet. Um, one, this project, the way it is designed, the bulk of its, all the height, the four stories plus the penthouse would front Fourth Avenue, um, Fifth Avenue Memorial, but the rear would go down to three stories. We worked with the developer extensively to come up with a design that took some of the original height off of what was proposed. This property is currently in the B zone and basically a similar, a, a exact same height is permitted with a bonus for affordable housing. However, this redevelopment plan would permit a much higher density than what the B zone would permit. Parking, affordable units would continue to have a zero parking obligation as is the case with all our other affordable ordinances, including other redevelopment plans. Non-affordable units would have a minimum of one point five parking spaces per unit. And there would have to be a landscape buffer between the parking areas and the uh, the neighboring property lines. Their design guidelines or design requirements, I should say, that there is masonry and fiber cement panels or will be the dominant material. And facades that are visible to a public right of way shall be of a primary material with a prohibition on vinyl siding. Glass shall be transparent and blank walls on primary facade should be discouraged. Put in design requirement for parking garages that um they shall have artwork, greenery or glass. Openings for, necessary for ventilation shall have decorative grill work and cannot occupy more than thirty percent of a primary facade. There's landscaping requirement that basically would follow chapter thirty, since we recently completely revamped our landscaping requirements apart of the zoning, general zoning amendments. And we have sustainability requirements that um the developers agreed to, that they shall demonstrate fifteen percent improvement in efficiency over the current ashery requirements. They shall utilize only energy star rate appliances or better. A sustainable, there'll be a sustainable rooftop that they will have space dedicated to hourly um car services, five percent or four parking spaces. There'll be a minimum of two electric car charging stations and an energy, um the achieving energy starving seventy-five or better and that there'll be rain gardens incorporated in the design. There's a minimum twenty percent affordable housing requirement and those units have to be integrated throughout the building and that the unit sizes are supposed to, as much as possible, be of similar size as um, as market units. And this last part is the agreement with redevelopers. Mostly this part is our standard language that we put in all the redevelopment plans and, but most importantly, that they will enter into a redevelopers agreement on the onset of this project and that they have, that agreement will of course have in about, about the twenty percent affordable housing and it would be twenty percent deed restricted affordable housing. So that's a quick or basic summary of the meat of this redevelopment plan. This um parcel is also in a U E Z zone and because of that, that enables the um applicant and the council, if they so desire, to negotiate a pilot for long-term tax abatement. So, in my opinion, of course, the um this redevelopment plan conforms with the newly adopted master plan in that it fulfills, it, it achieves the public, um, the strong desire in this municipality to create twenty percent deed restricted affordable housing.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So I, cause I, I don't understand this. So why is this a redevelopment plan? So I understand this is not an applicant coming, so what, so, so why is this not just a, a private project and it's a redevelopment plan? So I could miss it.
It is, let me explain. It is a private project, so in, in, it's a private developer. Private developer approached municipal council and said, we would like to do this project, we prefer not to go the zoning board of adjustment. We would like a redevelopment plan with very specific, with tailor-made to our project. And, you know, we would like a pilot and of course municipality um in order to achieve a pilot and do that, you create a redevelopment plan. And in New Jersey, you can create a redevelopment plan of one, two ways. You can declare an area need a redevelopment and so-called blight a parcel. Or if you have a citywide designation of rehabilitation and we do because of the age of our infrastructure, you can just, you can select an area and adopt a redevelopment plan, which has essentially almost all the powers of a redevelopment plan under an area in need of redevelopment designation, except you cannot take property by eminent domain. So this, if adopted and the process for adoption is municipal council refers this to the planning board. This council did by resolution. The planning board is forty-five days to review and to ensure that it conforms with the master plan. The planning board votes and reports back usually via resolution or oral testimony by the council person and the mayor who's on the board. Whether the planning, with, if the planning board believes this, this complies with the master plan. Then the council votes and adopts it as an ordinance and this will overwrite the existing zoning. This is currently in the B zone.
Okay, so I, I mean, I work in eminent domain, so I understand that stuff. My, my thing is that the, the, the developer is doing it as a redevelopment plan because they get something for that. That, that's my point.
The thing they get here is the density is higher than what's permitted in the B zone. It's something like fifty-five units per acre in the B zone. This one is seventy-seven. And they also the ability to have a pilot.
Right, okay.
You, oh, so that's.
I understand, I understand.
Now, um if I may, Michelle, the regulations that you're showing on the screen are fundamentally different than those that we received in our package.
Are, is it?
They are.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't see that agreement.
Uh, and, and also we were informed um of several other different requirements that are not in accordance with the ones that have been displayed to us this evening, um, including the maximum height. Um. And whether, there seems to be, and, and uh while you have described a building that has varying height, what we have describes a building that has uniform height across the entire site.
Yes, it's written, not with those varying heights, the varying heights are based upon the conceptual plan that was presented to the municipal council.
Now, a, and, okay, so that's, okay, great, but you, it, it seems confusing that you were meant to provide recommendations about what is, what whether or not we find that it's consistent with the master plan. However, these regulations and what you're presenting are quite different. And I'm also, am, am I also correct in understanding that we're very close to the end of our forty-five days?
We are, but let me just ensure, like, have on my screen mine that says Memorial Drive Draft Redevelopment Plan revised December nine, two thousand twenty-one.
We have November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
I'm going to go back to screen share one minute.
I got my package from the, the link from the city's website.
Okay, give me one second.
I, I downloaded from a link we received.
Michelle, do you want me to put that on the screen? Do you want me to? No, like, this is why I've on the screen. Does this match what's in your packet?
I, I have something to add, if I may.
Yes.
I'm looking at the signature of Melody Harts Grove on the second page of the resolution. Says that this resolution was adopted on the twenty-second day of December.
Yeah, certified on the ninth.
And down below, it's, um, signed by her and above her name is the twenty-second of December. Would this have been referred to us prior to that? If that makes sense? Because it says here at the first cover page is individual resolutions. Uh, municipal council meeting Wednesday, December twenty-second, twenty-second of twenty-one. So by that calculation, if it came over on December twenty-second, we are not at the end of the forty-five day term.
No, so I need to verify that date. If you give me, um, one moment.
It also says certified on December ninth.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense. The one paragraph says it's an exact copy of the resolution which was finally adopted by the council and meeting held on the twenty-second of December. And then it says certified by, as ninth of December, but then next to Melody's signature and the lower, on the right-hand side below the signature line is dated twelve, twenty-two, twenty-one. Consistent with our original certification. And the cover page.
And then, I guess, inasmuch as this is a response to a request for development by a private landowner, why in making decisions about the site are neighbors not entitled to a proper notice of hearing by the city council?
Well, the neighbors get the, the notice, um, upon adoption of the ordinance.
But it's, but you're creating a redevelopment zone, which is essentially a, a change in the zoning resolution. But nobody is noticed as such.
Before the council votes, don't they have to notify before they vote on the adoption of the ordinance?
No, it's just a general ordinance notification because a redevelopment plan does not require property notice.
Okay.
Yeah, the local redevelopment housing law does not follow the same notice requirements as general land development regulations. It was a separate, it's a lower standard, Eric.
And by the way, your oath, your oath that I gave you before applies to this file as well.
So there's no, there's no public meeting requirement for this thing?
No. Report only a finding by the planning board of consistency with the master plan in this forum that we're having tonight.
How often is this done that these, you know, these, because my understanding is this is a standalone, separate redevelopment plan for just this property. Is that correct?
Correct.
How often is that done in the city?
It's not done that often, but I have to say we may be seeing a little bit more of this as we, so we adopted in the pandemic, so we're going about two years ago, our affordable housing ordinances. I mean, this, the city has a strong desire to have inclusionary, affordable housing development. And what that means is, um, we're going to be probably seeing more of these as many developers are approaching the city looking for a financial incentive to create affordable housing.
So, so, for instance, if the planning board says now it's consistent with the master plan, then eventually there will be a private app, assuming they go forward, they'll, the, the city adopts the ordinance, right? Create this redevelopment area. And then assuming if they follow forward, the developer makes an application to the planning board. Is that correct?
Yes, but they also, in, with this one, as we probably with the others, they also have to first enter a redevelopers agreement with the municipal council.
And, and so this, because they're getting a different zoning, they're getting relief from the existing zoning because the redevelopment plan is creating its new zoning, so they don't have to go in front of the zoning board for any of those variances.
There's that part, and also you can only receive a pilot if you're in a plan area.
Oh, you have to be in a redevelopment to get the, the plan, to get the pilot. Okay.
Correct.
And, okay, and the, so the planning board can then, when there's the private application, either refuse or modify, except the, the plan, correct?
That depends on the contents of the application and the relief requested. If the applicant came in and didn't apply for any, let's say, quote, variances or design exceptions, uh, we would only apply applicable site plan ordinances. And if the plan meets with the site plan ordinances, then a positive vote should be for, should follow.
I mean, it just seems, you know, to change zoning for an area. I mean, you know, I'm a real estate professional in New York City, right? So, you know, this is what I do, redevelopment. I, I, to me, and I've been here eighteen years, it just seems to me to be a poor way to, you know, I would call this spot zoning, you know, that's, I mean, I know it's not exactly spot zoning, but it's almost that. So now if everybody's gonna do this, what, every half a block, we have a different redevelopment plan? Because people want to get a, you know, a pilot, you know, without having a public hearing and stuff like that for, for, for zoning to be changed near to people's homes, you know, I just don't think it's right.
To be, to be clear, Dan, there, there wouldn't be a public hearing for the ordinance.
Okay.
For the adoption of the plan.
Okay.
However, I will second Mr. Shamaio's, um, sentiment that not noticing seems like a circumvention of property owner's ability to opine until it's too late or you find out by accident. Now, I, you know, as a
I agree with you. It's something that's come up a lot in our forums, uh, you know, at APA. But that's the statute.
No, I get it. It's the statute. However, it seems like
But then there aren't too many other avenues. Don't forget, there aren't too many avenues for developers when they come in if there's attractive land and the zoning doesn't work for their idea. I mean, let's, let's think about the property we're, we're looking at right now. Right, the B-zone is a very restrictive height, has a restrictive but it has very liberal setbacks, you know, under the current zoning, five foot and zero. So there are fewer, you know, restrictions on, you know, the design. So, um, what it has done is negotiate with this developer to try and get the best of both worlds. It's gonna get this, you know,
Right.
Get something developed, A.
Right. And I think that, to summarize my opinion is, I think that largely there are many parts of this application that are in the interest of the or are consistent with the master plan. The achievement of greater numbers of affordable housing units, et cetera, et cetera. However, the current bulk requirements, particularly the bulk requirements, I'm not so concerned about necessarily, well, there are certain height requirements that I would like to, you know, have everybody talk about. But the existing property setback on Fifth and Fourth Avenue is much more significant. This will be the only building that sits proud of the, the traditional building line of Asbury Park for the entire length of Fourth or Fifth Avenue. It will just create a big wall at the end of, you know, at, at the break between the, the, uh, between, uh, east and west. Um, and it will sit much wider than everything else. And it's a kind of a end cap breaking the neighborhood in two pieces, further than the tracks already do. And so I, you know, my concern is that without a kind of clear study of finding related to what the likely outcome in design is meant to be, that they have not been properly weighed by the board or the public. But, you know, I'll put that aside for a second. Um, so my concern is actually for its relationship that where it does not meet the muster of being consistent with the master plan is by providing suitable transition between existing character and new development.
And is the buildings actually gonna be at the property line on Fourth and Fifth Avenue?
It seems that they would be directly at the property line on Fourth and Fifth Avenue.
So I don't know how it holds there, but I remember, you know, twelve years ago when I was putting my fence up, you know, there was the city right of way, which is a hundred feet, which basically extends into basically what everybody thinks is their front yard.
That's correct. My front yard is only half-owned by me.
Right. And I, you know, for my fence, actually, there's a city resolution, resolution that, you know, says my fence could be there. But, so is, is in this pla, I don't know, you know, west of Memorial, if that right of way exists.
That's correct. It's the same.
It is the same?
It is the same.
So this building, there'll be a permanent structure, building wall in the city's right of way?
Not in the city's right of way, between zero and five feet from the existing property line.
Um, can I, can I just break in here for a minute? I, I, I would really, and, and Jack, tell me if I'm wrong here. It sounds as though Eric is testifying and answering Dan's questions, and that doesn't sound right to me.
Okay, I can type down.
No, no, no. I'm, I, I just wanted to make sure we're doing the right thing. That testimony, it sounds more like testimony when it should be more Michelle or Donna stating those things.
Okay, that's fine. We could have Donna.
Checking, I'm, I'm just checking with our attorney to see
Yeah, no, I get it. I get it.
That's fair. Thank you.
Yeah, let's approach it in that, in that way.
So I'll ask the question again. Will, will the building wall, will the buildings be within the city's right of way on Fourth and Fifth Avenue?
No, no, not at all. But what Eric is referring to is that the R-one zone, by the way, this is the B-zone, which also, which currently has a zero setback. And that what?
On Fourth and Fifth, right now.
No, 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 no. What is permitted in the B-zone.
Right.
But this is not the R-one zone. This is the B-zone. And these setbacks, the, the, the front is consistent with the B-zone and with eh, um, and the, and consistent, that rear yard is consistent with the B-zone. And like Donna testified, I will reiterate, this redevelopment plan on, has heightened design requirements and green standards that the B-zone does not have. So you get that kind, that benefit from this individual, from this zoning. And a redevelopment plan, while it can be called spot zoning, the courts have upheld that it is not spot zoning and that municipality is allowed to write regulations and design regulations to, to a tailored, specific project. That's our prerogative under the local redevelopment and housing statute. The, there are two enabling statutes in New Jersey that the plant, lets the planning board review legislation and applications. One is called the municipal land use law. And that is what a good chunk of the city is, and that's why I use the term regular zoning, your B-zone, your R-one zone. Then there's another statute called the Local Housing Redevelopment Law statute that gives the parameters for municipality to create redevelopment plans for the boards, for the planning board, not the zoning board. Zoning board can't review one. For the planning board to review applications in a redevelopment plan and for municipal council of basic terms for them to enter into a long-term tax abatement. So under the local housing redevelopment statute, you can spot, quote-unquote, spot zone, and it's not spot zoning and it's completely illegal. And this municipality is deciding to do so, or say the municipal council, because this project, you know, when it comes to fruition, has a great benefit to the city. This will be our first project with twenty percent affordable inclusionary housing. And we have been working on this redevelopment plan for over two years. So I also, while I'm speaking, clarify the date. It is the twenty-third of December, it was referred. I know what occurred with the, the agenda program that generates Melody's signature, why it has a wrong date on it? The council heard this on the twenty-second. Melody, the city clerk, sent it out on the twenty-third. I forwarded it to Igreen on the twenty-third. So that's the correct date. I would like to go back to sharing my screen.
Yeah, we, we see, we see your screen now, um, Michelle, on the fourteen land use requirements.
Wait, let me go, let me go back to it myself. Okay. Is this what's in your packet?
I have that, yes.
Yeah. Just let me know when I can, when I can say something.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Um, while I also see that we're looking to, uh, one of the issues that we're, we're really looking for here is to find out if this is consistent with the master plan. I think it's also our duty as the planning board to ensure to, for us to understand what the impact uh, of these modifications are to our, uh, neighborhood. The neighborhoods that these developments are in. So besides the fact of whether or not this is, this adheres to the, the master plan, once I, I, I went over to that, that, um, that land today to take a look to see what it means and what those setbacks means from the property lines and what those view corridors are on Fourth and Fifth. And, and I don't know how many of you have gone there, but it is having a building that will block all of the view from the porches of the people that live on Fourth and Fifth. I, it, it just doesn't seem right to me. Uh, and that's just whether that's within the law or not within the law. It doesn't seem right that it's doing that to the neighborhood. When you look at the views going to the ocean and from the ocean on Fourth and Fifth, if, if we actually live by the zero to five feet on the property line, there's going to be an obstruction there on that piece of, piece of land. That's my two cents.
Well, that's my point about the, the, the city right of way, because, you know, if you, if you look at the, the property, you know, where the temporary fencing is, is at the sidewalk. Uh, you know, and I suspect that the property line is further in, not at the sidewalk. So, you know, and in the package, the aerial that's shown with the superimposed building looks like the building walls are at the sidewalk line. I mean, yeah, I mean, that'll be something that will be dealt with later, but, you know, that, that's the concern. Certainly, you can't build it out to the sidewalk if there's a right-of-way there.
It's not built out to the sidewalk. And at the sidewalk, yes, the right-of-way there is very wide. Because Michael Manzella and myself had looked at this in comparison to the, the block, to the other block where the, the shops are. The right-of-way here is very wide. And yes, this building goes up to very close to the sidewalk. That's for two reasons. I mean, one is to be able to fit all the parking, to have a parking requirement of one point five spaces per unit. That is, and it's screened, that is needed to fit the parking. And then the other part about that, that is currently the requirement in the B-zone already. That is not a deviation of what is currently zoned there. So a building of a similar bulk can currently be built there. of a similar bulk can currently be built there.
Are you saying that the height limitations in the B zone is a five-story?
It's a four-story. And then if you provide affordable housing, you're actually allowed an additional story. So this in some ways is less. Because this has been designed to that the fifth story is a penthouse story. And that the back of the building actually steps down from the B zone. The side, well, the sides do not, the rear, the, I mean, the R one zone, the rear of the building does.
If you look at the facade of the, uh, uh, shopping center to the north of this, one block north, that's a two-story. You're telling me that this is going to be twice that high on Memorial plus a penthouse, and that the first floor can be used for retail, a restaurant, uh, office space, et cetera. And then you're going to put, uh, a hundred and fifteen dwelling units into the that story, uh, that, that, uh, block that fronts on Memorial. That, but that whole facade is not repeated until you get south of, uh, Asbury Avenue. Um, the development that was recently approved uh, for, uh, the area right across from the rear of the train station. Uh, this is way out of scale with everything that is on that north side of, uh, uh, Asbury Avenue. And the requirements that the, uh, the city has approved, the mayor and council has approved seems to me very, uh, very severely limits what the planning board, uh, has to review at if and when it comes before the planning board. It, it does not seem to me to be a, a good project for that location.
And if I may jump into Jim, I think, thank you for that thought. I think the purpose of the redevelopment agreement should be to put appropriate design controls that balance the good that we could get from it in terms of affordable housing. And I agree that we should allow sufficient, even more density on this, like, we should allow greater density on this site. But then the opportunity exists in this moment to make sure that allowing that additional density makes sure that there is shaping that happens to contextualize and transition appropriately into what is a residential neighborhood. You can say it's the B zone, but it's a residential neighborhood. And you're, and the vast majority of area being created here is residential, not business. You know, this is a big residential building. And I think that the the big, you know, issue here is how that give and take, this is the opportunity to say, okay, can we make the building set back on the side streets a little bit more? And then you exchange for a higher height on Memorial. Like, I don't know, like, there seems like there's so many options here that could be further explored and still be consistent with the master plan. I agree, consistent, we should get affordable housing, we should allow more density, we should get the parking we need to. All of that stuff should happen. But I think that the design controls may not really be addressing a broader attention to existing character.
So, so Eric, could I try and sum up your recommendation? Are you suggesting that there'd be a, a greater setback or a greater side yard setback in exchange for a sixth floor?
Um, my opinion is that we should look at, that the fourth and fifth avenue frontages should be more closely aligned to the existing building line and, and I would advocate if what's in exchange is a greater height on Memorial Drive, yes. But not uniform bulk across the site, no.
Yeah, because even here in fourteen, I don't see where it says side yard setbacks, right?
It doesn't, it, it doesn't say anything about, we don't have any information, I'm sorry. I also don't feel we have any information about how the building is meant to be shaped.
But I mean, we see, no, I'm saying in the bulk requirements, there's a rear yard setback and a front yard setback. But there's no side yard setback requirements?
Because there are, it's fronts and rears because of three frontages.
Oh, so each side is considered a front?
Except for the one that's a rear.
Correct, right. The three sides are, are fronts. Okay.
Can, um,
Wait, oh, sorry, can I just respond?
Yeah, yeah.
This developer originally came in with a taller building. We were based upon in what we thought were concerns of the community. We asked the height to go down and the footprint get bigger.
May I ask a question about how, how did you determine the concerns of the community?
I was relayed to me and relayed to other people. Um, yeah, relayed to, well, I, I, it may be hearsay if I say, um, you know, relate.
This isn't a judicial hearing, go ahead.
Related to the municipal council. So it was requested for a redesign. So this is very surprising, you know, to me to hear about go back up in height.
This is just, that was only my, like, I would be willing to say that a greater height could be allowed if the setbacks were more appropriate. Like, I'm, I'm, that's my opinion as a planning board member.
Yeah, I mean, just looking at the pictures, at a zero to five feet setback on fourth and fifth avenue. You, the building walls are going to protrude against all the other, all the other properties that, you know, go further west. So all the single-family homes up on fourth and fifth avenue. Now, you know, sit on that porch and look east and look at a wall of the, of the new building. Instead of down the street.
You would have that if it was built as of right anyway. But, but saying that, again, for, to achieve
I know, but you're giving them a pilot, so I understand that.
Stop, 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 stop. Stop, and I'm not giving them a pilot. I don't know who is the, the, who is the we, the person giving the pilot. If a pilot is granted, that's by the municipal council.
Well, I'm just saying one of the, you, you said that one, it's not personal. You said one of the reasons why they're doing this is because that's the way they can seek a pilot. So I understand that you're saying under the existing zoning, the setbacks are the same. But we're, you're, we're giving them something beyond the existing zoning. So, you know, one thing that could be taken away is to ask on fourth and fifth avenue, greater setbacks.
Alexis, I know that you were waiting to, uh, jump in.
Yeah, I had a couple of clarifying questions, but did Michelle want to respond or?
No, it, it's fine, it's fine.
Okay, um, so this is about your, um, testimony and just some clarifications. I think you said that, um, in looking at the side setback requirements, you did refer to the shopping center to the north?
Yes.
Um, but how did that end up setting the setback requirements? Or was it a precedent? How, what was the reference?
When this well, a while ago, I'd say three years ago, I'm trying to think. There was a proposal for development here that basically Michael Manzola and I had to compare the two right of ways. And because there was actually a proposal for development here that was denser and bigger. And there was a request to try to make up the parking somehow. So we had noticed that, um, that there's more, the, the sidewalk here bumps out more. Basically, there's more right away, but yes, this building would be basically up to the sidewalk with the zero to five. They, I think the developer's looking at more of the five. So you would have a five-foot setback from Memorial. And you probably, and it's, it's most likely going to be a zero setback on the side yards, but I don't think they, they could do a, a project here where they bring the building sides in twenty-five feet. That's the R one front yard setback. I think that's an impossibility.
No, and I don't, I, I'm not, I mean, I didn't bring up twenty-five feet. I just wanted to know what precedent design, whatever you guys were looking at. And you're saying it's a front yard setback of the shopping?
It's that, it's, it's this type of building, this type of development, usually you look to hug the, for a multifamily building. You know, in an urban context, you look to hug the sidewalk. You try not to create that much, like, space between the sidewalk and the building typically in an urban area. And there's also, again, the, the shopping, there's a lot of buildings on Memorial that have a zero setback. Um, and or, and also, again, looking at this building and be able to accommodate the parking and shielding the parking from the sidewalk view, that also necessitate, necess, necess, makes it needed to push this up to the sidewalk.
So I, I guess that then, I, just in what I'm gleaning from what you're saying, that the block to the north or other blocks along Memorial, it would, I, I understand coming up to or having a zero to five-foot setback along Memorial, but it does seem very different than any precedent of the although you're calling it a front yard, let's just say the side yard. For the purposes of clarity, that fourth and fifth avenue sides are side yards, which are setback in that shopping mall. They actually have additional parking on that, although, um, fortunately, you know, and at least the south side, it's become outdoor seating. Um, but I think that, I don't, I don't know the example as, as Jim Henry brought up, until you get south of Asbury, that you have a the same setback both on Memorial and on the, uh, avenue, let's say the numbered avenue sides. I may be wrong, if there's another precedent for that, that's consistent with that.
But the, and the other thing I wanted to add is that Memorial Drive is very wide. And like a rule, a rule of thumb is basically wide. Well, you know, we're, you were talking about the side streets, but that wide, you know, right of ways can usually accommodate height and thus.
Yeah, no, I totally agree.
Agree, I, I.
No, I actually, I mean, I'm very pro-density um, on this site. I guess it's how how density is accommodated really has to do with bulk requirements. And there's a lack of specificity in the bulk requirements, um, which, uh, you know, in, in what we're contemplating for the redevelopment agreement, and I know you've seen conceptual plans, but we don't have the benefit of that. You know, all we see is that this could be a four-story block, as in block building. And I think even as you're describing, uh, setback, which is great because there should be greater density along the Memorial side, we don't have that descriptive language, so I don't even know where it would go down to three feet, at what point in the block, right? And these are all bulk standard requirements.
I mean, I, I can add that language.
I think it would be useful because we've opened it up so much, I don't even know. I, I know you're counting on the conceptual design, but all we have to go on is that this could be four-story bulk. Whatever, you know, some other developer could come in, some other redevelopment agreement, I know that this is planning, but we don't really have an understanding of the nuance of the bulk requirements that are actually occurring in the design. And I think that with the benefit of understanding what a already conceptualized design can accommodate on this site, why not just include it in the bulk requirements?
Okay.
Anybody else from the planning board have any other questions, uh, of Michelle? Or concerns?
Yeah, what, what's proposed for the first floor?
The, right now, this developer is not proposing the retails, proposing just lobby and parking. Screened, though, heavily screened parking.
Are you saying that, that the first floor, there's no, nothing is going to be subterranean at this point, that the first floor is going to be parking and that the, uh, residential starts on the second floor?
Yes, because, yes.
Okay, so why, in, in the land use requirements, so why are you, uh, even considering retail? Uh, and restaurant and office space and service, uh, industry, uh, uses, if you're talking specifically about this site, why don't we make it specific about this site? That there will be no, uh, commercial use on the first floor and that, uh, the maximum number of units, by my calculation, will end up being a hundred and fifteen, twenty-three of which will be, uh, um, affordable units. And is that trade-off sufficient? Should there be more than, uh, twenty-three affordable units if this goes ahead with a four-story, uh, building? And maybe another consideration is, since you're, uh, doing away with the, uh, uses on the ground floor, maybe, uh, the building could be dropped down a floor and a parking underneath the building. I, I don't know, I haven't done any, uh, tests to the groundwater over there, but it may very well be that, uh, you could put parking below the first floor and that, uh, you have, you get all your, uh, residential units in the, uh, second, third, and fourth floors, you won't need to go up to the fifth floor.
Well, I, the way it's designed, I I mean, I'm fine striking all the language pretty retail ground floor, but and right now, it, that is maxed out the number of units and the density. So I don't feel that needs to be changed. But this developer, again, working with them for two years um, does not believe that they can do the underground parking.
Why not? Expensive.
Yeah, I mean, we have to consider what it takes actually to develop things and finance them. I mean, you, you can't ask for more density and more affordable housing and underground parking and, and, and shrink the building footprint. I mean, we have to be a little realistic.
We're not talking about shrinking the building, like, we're talking about putting.
That was a recommendation, but, no.
We're, we're talking about putting the same number of dwelling units at a lesser height.
Right.
Okay.
But that is, yeah, that's shrinking the building and the height, and I don't think this developer can realistically go underground and make the finances work.
Okay.
Um, if I may interject, I did not advocate for reducing the overall square footage or unit size of the building. I advocated for shaping the building to more appropriately transition between the neighborhoods. So I agree that that may mean a taller height on Memorial Drive than, and still stepping down towards the neighborhoods. But also recognizing that you can make it, you can respect more of the existing setback on fourth and fifth avenue. I am not advocating that it has to be, that all of those parameters you mentioned just a minute ago, Mike, are in place.
No, I'm not. I'm just saying that there's a, a couple of different competing interests here. That's one of them, is, is the setbacks on fourth and fifth. Height is a competing interest.
Yep.
Parking is a competing interest. Density is a competing interest and affordable housing.
Yep.
And that, you know, there, I think what Michelle's trying to do here is squeeze out all of our, all of the, the neighborhood, you know, the community's desires into something that actually works and can be built. That's all I was saying.
Yeah, I think, I think that there is a solution that, um, both reasonably respects the existing character of the residential neighborhood that this abuts and gets an appropriate amount of density and height on the site.
Yeah. Let me ask, when it becomes affordable housing, does it now, is it just strictly re- rental?
Well, this developer is proposing it as a rental building.
But but so I I, you know, I I don't understand the Jersey statute, so when you have affordable house, is there affordable condominium housing under this statute?
Got you.
Yes.
Yes.
Right, so but this developer. So our agree, the the council's agreement with it would be for rental. With provisions if this building ever went condo. To carry on the deed restriction of thirty years.
Meaning that it would have to be a rental for thirty years?
No.
Well, the affordable units would have to be rental, affordable rental units for thirty years.
Yes.
That doesn't do it.
I'm sorry, Rick, I think that you had something that you wanted to step in and say?
Yeah, so. Um, Michelle, you said that the. Developer has no plans to put any kind of commercial use on the ground for that, it's just going to be lobby and parking.
Yes.
So. You know, when we, when we looked at the uh zoning component of the master plan reexamination and we, that was all down zoned to neighborhood business. I mean, it seems like we're encouraging or allowing something contrary to how we wanted that area to develop. Over time, it's going to be a a whole block face of no use. You know, just a a with an entry to a lobby and. Uh, that seems contrary to what we wanted to achieve in that area uh when we redid the the zoning ordinance.
Although here's one of the, but one of the things about the master plan is we did talk about. Strengthening existing retail corridors and. Retail on Memorial right now, i- it's tough. I- it's tough and we, you know, when the. Concentrating retail efforts on Main, we've talked about that strengthening Main as a retail corridor. Um.
I understand that, but this you, this creates a situation where. You can't even. Develop it for any kind of commercial use down the road, I mean, I I certainly understand it's just the Main Street's commercial corridor and it's, you know, it's been very successful. But by allowing of a a complete block face that has no opportunity to become any kind of commercial uses. Or neighborhood business, even supporting businesses for the residential. Development that's going to be in the building itself, you you're not even, there's not even an allowance for. Any kind of support services to develop within that block that would support the neighborhood and support. The people that live in that building, so that seems to me that we're just kind of shooting ourselves in the foot. By not asking the developer to include some ability to develop that some of that space for commercial, neighborhood, commercial uses.
There's such a desire, though. For the one point five parking space per unit, like Mike said, this. Trying to fit everything. We can on the site and produce the affordable housing. We, I, there again, um. There's a very strong desire. Of the municipality to create affordable housing, it's such an urgent need.
Yes.
And that. This again would be. Probably, you know, de- one of the first projects to come online. Another very similar project with the z- the setbacks. That that you, um, but you're right, did every tell that this planning board approved was long for the long Memorial. But um by City Hall and that project stalled out right now. Because of the fina- because of the finances needed to build that.
And that project has fewer parking spaces overall. Ratio is lower than one and a half per. Just as a, as a a reference, you know, when you're taking into account these um. The competing interests, right, there's parking, there's density, there's landscaping, there's setbacks. Um, and almost everyone on this board is familiar with the nine hundred Memorial application, Madison Banks. Um, and Memorial. That, you know, that squeezed a lot. Into that, into those two blocks. But it was a very, very small footprint of of retail space, if you recall. Over for the, you know, the overall size, and again, that this is competing against providing Wall Street parking and even the parking ratio for that project. Was lower than what's proposed in this redevelopment plan.
But but when it says permitted principal uses for the ground floor, does that mean that's the only uses for the ground floor?
No.
Okay.
No, I I believe I put residential there and I have.
Well, that's a, no, it's a second to fifth floor is residential.
Right, with the uh with, but the accessory uses of parking is permitted on the ground.
Permitted accessory uses, got it.
Okay, um, we're we're here at almost ten after eight. Uh, we have to get to the next application, which is, which begins at eight thirty, as we've always said. Um, now we have to understand what are our next steps here? So that we can move this forward uh one way or another. Um. So if anyone has any suggestions as to how we can. Uh, do we need to get together outside of this meeting to kind of? Go through this a little bit further or? Or is this, do you have enough information, Michelle, or? We need to, we kind of need to figure out how we're going to, what's our next step? Because I think that you've heard quite a bit of what our concerns are.
Mm hmm.
And um. I'm not quite sure, to be honest, what a next step would be, maybe Jackie have something, um. Or what are you guys uh thinking?
Typically, if I may, I'm sorry. Typically, what you do when you're done with these discussions. Is and and you've had a quite opportunity to question uh. Michelle, public and so on. Uh, you then, you then pass a resolution. Uh, with comments attached, that gives you the, that's essentially the report. That you're sending back to the mayor and council. And you make specific findings, whether or not you believe the master plan. Is being complied with, if so, where, or if not, where? And you're allowed to make other comments and recommendations, that's, I read that specifically to you at the beginning of the evening. So uh what we've done when we're finished, if we're finished. Is send back what you believe needs to be done. Uh, A consistency or not. B, we have these other concerns and they are as follows, and that we believe the mayor and council ought to. Address these in serious detail. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, whatever it is. And then it's up to the mayor and council to take that, those recommendations and proceed from there.
Do we, do we as a board feel that we are ready to provide that information to uh Michelle? Or do we feel that we need some more time to di- digest this?
Well, Barbara, I for one, I think we've we've uh told Michelle. What our concerns are and that there may be uh. If the, maybe Michelle needs to talk with the developer. And see if there can't be uh some sort of a compromise uh. From the board's point of view and the council's point of view, see if there can be a resolution uh that would work and. Uh, have the uh. Have a discussion between Michelle and the developer. Uh, and a presentation, a new presentation to the council addressing the uh.
We have a, I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead.
Just addressing the issues that we uh have and possibly have the developer uh. Come back with a a a different uh. You know, different set of uh. Rules of regulations concerning what we are discussing here.
All of that can be put into the referral report back, we have a statutory obligation. Unless the council extends the time, which they have on many occasions in the past. Uh, we have to, we have to send this report back within forty five days, in my calculations, we are at day thirty two. Possibly day thirty three. And we only have so much time left.
I I I agree, Jack, I think that, well, we have made enough of uh uh. Comments on issues that we think need to be resolved, and if the uh a report goes back to the council, you know, uh certainly. Uh. But what they do is up to them, obviously, but you know.
I mean, if it, you know, it's, it sounds like you you want her to go back and then come back, well.
No, not not within the time period, I, that would work, obviously. No, I wa- I wasn't being bad at all.
No, okay, okay, okay.
So perhaps ask the council to extend the time, so.
That, that's the other issue, we've done that, but the problem is, is that. If they don't, we have, our me, our meeting is fourteen days, not not thirteen days.
Well, would we be able to ask the council that is here, can they speak with the council or no?
Uh, that would, that's.
Yvonne or or John?
That's only a question the mayor and Yvonne can answer, I can't answer that.
I can't speak for the council, I I'm only one person. Um, and usually when the time runs out, the council makes the decision whether to move forward or not. So my suggestion is to follow uh the lead of Jack. And express your concerns, send it off. And let us look at it and consider it.
Alright, so then let's, let's, if that's. If that's uh where where we're going, Yvonne, then I think that we as a board have to uh express or. Concisely uh put together what. What our concerns are.
Yep.
And I don't know.
First step is uh and master plan consistency. Second step is identify the areas of your concern beyond the master plan consistency. And it's usually one, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, one, whatever the numerical sequence is. Of the recommendations for the council to consider, and then we just attach that to the uh resolution, sending it back.
Alright.
So I would a- advocate that we cite sort of bifurcate the master plan consistency question into portions of the. Of the project that we do find to be consistent and portions that we do not.
That's up to the board, if you want to say it's, you feel it's consistent in these areas.
In these areas, but not these areas.
And inconsistent in these areas, you state that and then go on to your other concerns.
Yeah, so i- if I may, my, from my perspective, I think it is consistent with the creation of affordable housing, and I think that. This project and this action should be commended for such, and we should do what we can to make that happen. So it is consistent from the perspective of affordable housing. However, the master plan also makes specific. Recommendations about contextualizing new development into existing residential neighborhoods, and from my perspective as a board member, this. Set of bulk regulations does not appropriately transition from the new development to the existing development. Third, I think parking, you're like, yes, we need parking, but is it, is is that the priority, is parking our priority?
What specifically would you, oh, keep one, one, one caveat here. When I get this resolution done, it's not going to be adopted within the timeframe to be sent over. Because we 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 can't adopt a written resolution this evening, it would have to be adopted at the next meeting.
But Jack, you can draft the resolution. And it can be relayed by Yvonne as the council member.
Mm hmm, for informational purposes until the board adopts it formally.
Right, because the report, while the, you know, meant very much the preferred is the adopted resolution, is also can be a oral.
I know, I know, I know, I know the law, I do know the law.
Oh, not, I also knew, you know, some board members are.
All right, we, I mean, we could do this in the form of recommendations tonight that could be put forth in a letter reform report. That can be signed by the chair and so or secretary or and sent over in the interim, doesn't have to go the resolution process. I'm only telling you how we've operated in the next.
And I would say we have a meeting on Wednesday night, so if something you wanted to be considered. Um, you should try to get this to me as soon as possible.
Right, because because that's the next council meeting, the council meeting after that is two weeks after and that. That that's beyond our dates.
No, that's not beyond, that's that's our data, our our obligation is to get it to them within the forty.
Okay.
If they have a meeting afterwards, that they they can't ignore us.
Okay. Alright, one of the things that I'd like to uh note as a as a concern is that. It's the the setbacks of uh zero to five feet, um. I am very concerned about the corridors, the view corridors on Fourth and Fifth. And to, for the people that have their uh front walks. I mean, their front uh porches, that they should not be blocked by this building. Uh, now that is more, that may not be, have anything to do with uh being consistent with the master plan, but that is something that will impact the neighborhood. And that's the part that I have a concern about.
Why don't we do this? I don't take steno, even though I'm that old. Um, these are going to get rather di- complicated. I would suggest that all of you vent. Your opinions, if the board, then the board then has to vote on them to make sure that they want it included within their report, because you just can't have. Every comment from every member going over unless the board approves of it. Then send me an email telling me more, giving me the detail, like obviously Eric's. Comments are very detailed, he's given this a lot of thought. So you send me that. Barbara, you can send me yours, I can take all of these comments that we talk about tonight and vote on. And I can work with Irina to collate them into a letter form from the board to the mayor and council as the response. And then we'll make sure, I'll send it to everybody, get a quick read on it. And hopefully it won't be as as complicated as a couple of the resolutions were uh for the evening, but. And when then we can just ship it off. I mean, that would make it easier rather than me sitting here trying to write these all down, I'm not going to get them right, I know it.
Well, well, we've heard what Eric's concerns are, we've heard mine, uh, anyone else want to put something out there?
I'm just seconding, seconding what you had said about the, about the the setbacks on Fourth and Fifth Avenue.
Okay. Jennifer?
Uh, yes, sorry, this is, I do, I also second, uh, actually second both everything Eric said and and Barbara's comments. Um, the other thing, I'm sorry, I didn't get to ask before, but it was it was an important conversation, I didn't want to interrupt, I just had one question about the. Sustainable L um items that are listed, sustainability requirements, um. I noticed it said fifteen percent improved on the current ASHRA standard is one thing, right, or the current code?
Right.
And the second, second was uh Energy Star rating of seventy five. The, so the first thing said, um, demonstrated, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but. Demonstrate that, so it's just by a mod, they would just do a model. Like the first one that says demonstrate that it's fifteen percent better than existing current code. Um, so then it just says demonstrate, so they would produce a mod, is that modeling base that you're asking for, did we determine how they will demonstrate through a model?
No, we we didn't determine if it's through a model.
Okay. But that, is that hand in hand with the Energy Star process, or is it too separate?
It's too, they're too separate, they're too separate.
Okay, and they have to do both?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that was my question.
Alright, anybody else that would like to include anything else?
I just that I was um satisfied with um Michelle's offer to um re- refine uh and make more specific the bulk standards. So I'd just like for that to be included.
Alright, and so would you mind Alexis sending that to Jack? Okay, anybody else, so that we know who's sending information to Jack and what we're voting on today?
The only, the only other thing that I heard in the discussion was um some talk about the height, so if.
Yeah.
If the board's recommendation are that. The height requirement can be greater, maybe that's something that's included.
That's.
Better on Memorial Drive.
Right.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, you're pushing.
That's specific, yes.
Towards Memorial, I get it.
Right. Height on Memorial Drive, if we can get the view corridors.
I think that's what, yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. So.
Anybody else?
Could, so let's take this in the form of a motion. From the board that the comments that everybody has just made will be. Further developed and sent to me via email, and I will put them in a letter with Irina. We will ship it back to all of you for your uh input and then um. Well, once it's. And then, um, well, once it's approved, we'll forward that along as the report of the board required by the statute.
Uh, Jack, can I ask, uh, Eric to send me a copy of his, he, he's pretty much, uh, said many of the things I was thinking about. And I'd like to see a copy of that. I don't want to bombard you with a whole lot of extraneous, uh.
Okay.
Material. So if Eric would be, uh, would send me a copy of your, uh, uh, comments to Jack, um, so that I can, uh, either add or go along with what you have so far. I'd appreciate it, Eric.
So I'll, I'll, um, I, I'm, I think I can't copy other board members. I'll send them to Irina and Irina will transfer it to you.
Yeah, we can't copy the entire board and turn it into a meeting without proper notice. So you can copy one or two and then also send a copy to Irina as the board's.
I'll send Irene, uh, copy to Irina and she can distribute as she sees fit.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And it's Jen again. I know we're running out of our, to our time. One last question, um, regarding that back to the energy, um, piece that since it's not defined how that first bullet is demonstrated, how, how will it work practically? Meaning say the applicant comes and then they do that, then who, how will that be defined? Like, how will that be proven?
The building department will have to be the ones to regulate that, but they will check in with us. Meaning us meeting the zoning officer.
Okay. Uh, the reason I, I asked probably because it's, I mean, we haven't done a lot of that, right?
No, that's no.
Right. It's a, it's a great step. I just want to make sure that we are able to, I just, and I can talk offline about, I'm, I'm just, I just want to understand how that will work now.
Right. But, but what, what we can do, Jen, is then, then that's what, that's what should be included. In this.
Yeah, I, and I don't, I don't know. I don't know if it needs to be included in this. I just, it's more of a little thing within the city. It's not, it's, I mean, if it's going to happen and it's stated in there that it'll happen, that's fine. I just want to understand how it'll be documented, um, so that there's like some accountability there.
Anybody else that wants to include anything that, uh, for our friend Jack? All right. So if, if not, then, um, we need a motion, we need a motion to approve based on the, um, recommendations that, um, are, that have just been mentioned and they'll be elaborated upon by every member that has made the suggestion and sent to Jack. Jack will, will put it together and a letter will be sent to the council with our recommendations.
I'm moved.
Second. A second, Jen Souter.
Okay. I have a motion by Michael Manzella and a second by Jennifer Souter. Um, all right. Uh, Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
I'd say.
Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Eric Gallopho.
Yes.
Rick Lambert.
Yes.
Barbara Krizak.
Yes.
And we'll go to Daniel Scannamio.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Um, so recommendation approved and, uh, we will send or draft a document referring to council.
Right. And there are significant modifications there that we are recommending.
Sure. We have.
Remember, remember that. Go ahead, Jack.
We have a couple, and we've got a week and a half or so. So it's not like we got to do this all first thing tomorrow morning, but we'll get it done. It might take a little back and forth, but we'll get it done in time.
Right. There's also, uh, let me just be clear that, that people that would like, once it does go to council and once it does go into an ordinance, that the, that, um, we as the public are allowed to voice our opinion there also, but not as a representative of the planning board.
Right. You're there as individual homeowners.
Okay. All right. We, we're okay?
Yeah.
All right. I'd like to, um, suggest that we have a, a 10 minute break before we start our next, uh, application.
Sure. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much for everybody pull, trying to pull this together. I know it's complicated and we have the best interests of our city at heart. Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion, Barbara, Barbara Krizak, and a second by Jennifer Souter for a 10 minute break. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. 10 minute break. All right. Let's take all then. Uh, Mayor John Mark.
Here.
And Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Jennifer, I'm sorry, Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Eric Gallopho.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
Barbara Krizak.
Here.
Daniel Scannamio.
Yes, here.
And Juanita Barnes. Oh, wait, she's not back.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, oh, great. Thank you, Juanita.
Donna's back. Donna Miller.
Yeah, Donna Miller is here.
Jason, are you there? Jason is here. All right. Great. All right. So the next, uh, next on board, next application and our last application for the evening is 649 Madison LLC. Mr. Caris?
May, before Mr. Caris begins, may I get us up to speed on this? All the members that are in attendance this evening, we're in attendance at the December 6th meeting. So therefore everyone is eligible to vote. Mr. Caris.
Thank you. Andrew Caris from the firm Fox Rothschild on behalf of the applicant, 649 Madison LLC. Um, this is a continuation of a matter that had been presented, uh, quite a number of weeks ago. Um, we're back with some revised plans, but before we get started, I do want to address a few items. Um, one of the big issues on this application is whether or not this project is a historic building that impacts the standards that apply in terms of development of this site. I had written correspondence to the board attorney a little while ago, explaining to him that this building is not on any historic register. It is not on the state historic register, is, it is not on a federal or national historic register. Now, there is a historic district in the downtown of Asbury Park, and there are about 60 buildings that are located within that historic district. Forty-eight of those 60 buildings are considered contributing in order to make the district historic. However, just because they're listed as contributing does not mean that they are on the historic register. In fact, when you look at the application, it has separate distinctions. The application that was made in 2014, they made it a historic register. It has a section on it for structures. It has a section for land. It has other sections and it has a section for district. The building section, the structure section is not checked off. It was a district wide area that was made historic. In addition to that, you have a list within the master plan of all the buildings that are historic, either on the state or the national register. This building, although indicated as eligible for the national, uh, or state register, is not indicated as being on the state or national register. Let me explain why this is significant. You have in your redevelopment plan, under the design guidelines, a specific section that states structures on the national structures, structures on the national and or state registers of historic places shall be subject to the Department of Interior standards for rehabilitation. Structures, not buildings within a district, not a historic district. As I indicated, you have 48 of 60 buildings within the downtown that are listed in the historic district as contributing buildings. I can tell you now, just about all the buildings that are in Cookman Ave, half the buildings that are on Madison Avenue are contained as contributing buildings. One building, one building is on the historic register and that is the Steinbeck Building. And the standard, when that building was redesigned or rehabilitated, conformed with the national standards for rehabilitation, the Department of Interior standards. That's the only one. Out of all the other buildings of the 48 buildings, and I can tell you just about all of them have been redone, rehabilitated. Other than the Steinbeck, not a single one of them was required to comply with the Department of Interior standard for rehabilitation. Not a single one in the same category as this existing building on 649 Madison Ave. And I can tell you, I presented applications for a lot of those buildings. 550 Cookman was one of them, um, up and down the street. I've done a lot of them. Not a single one, aside from the Steinbeck, was required to comply with the Department of Interior standard for rehabilitation. In turn, nearly the entire report that we looked at from the planner for the board contains standards that state that we had to comply with for the Department of, uh, relative to the Department of Interior, and that we are not complying with those standards in redevelopment of this particular property. It is an incorrect standard. It is inapplicable. And the standard that is in that report does not pertain to this property. That's number one. Number two, the work that was done on the property already was done pursuant to permits that were properly pulled. It should not even be an issue tonight. They were properly pulled and they were properly granted because it is not required to comply with the, uh, interior, uh, standards of rehabilitation. So I just wanted that to be clear as we proceed with this application, that the application, the first floor, what was done, the work that was done was proper, was properly permitted. And what we're talking about tonight are not the windows and doors that are replaced on the first floor, but rather second floor, the addition that is being put on to the bill. So I just wanted to mention that before we get started, the application, if anybody wants to address that, I'm on a list.
We're, we're going to have to have our planner address, uh, the claim that the planner's report is not correct. Donna, please raise your right hand. Psalmless swear, the testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Do you state your name and affiliation with the board?
Donna Miller, um, certified planner, licensed professional planner, State of New Jersey, employee of Clark Catan Hens, which is the board's appointed planner.
You've heard the comments by Mr., uh, Caris, what's your response?
Uh, so it's the determination of our firm, um, by John Hatch, who is our principal historic preservation architect, um, that in fact, contributing structures within a listed historic district are in fact considered registered with the National Historic Register of Places, uh, National Historic Register. Um, I, you know, I'm telling you that, but it's not my forte. It's not my specialty. Um, but we have consulted, uh, on a number of these projects, my firm. And, um, that's the general understanding. I mean, the idea that you would have historic district recognized by the National Register that contains properties that define the history, define the characteristics and not be considered historic is incongruous. So I, I don't know, um, you know, how else to respond to Mr. Caris's claim, except that it's our position that that's not correct. That properties that are listed as contributing, which the subject property is in the city's petition to, um, you know, the feds for, for the designation of the historic district is that those properties that are contributing are identified as historic structures.
May I cross examine?
Well, you can have a discussion. I don't typically allow our staff to get cross examined, but you would, you can engage in discussion with their guard. Go ahead.
Donna, are you aware of what the redevelopment plan provides for? It indicates that structures, not districts, structures on the national and or historic register or state register is subject to Department of Interior standards for rehabilitation. You understand that's what the plan provides for, correct?
Yes.
And you understand also that when an application is made to be put onto the historic register, it can be made in different ways. Number one, a structure. Number two, it could be made also as a district, correct? Their separate designations.
So again, I just said, this is not my strength. I am not a historic preservation specialist. Um, but it is my understanding that again, you're, what you're describing is not, um, you know, it's, um, not exclusive. Our position is that when you receive designation as a district, contributing structures are therefore designated, listed.
Well, let me ask you a question, Nick. Are you aware that 48 out of 60 structures in the downtown historic area are listed as contributing to have made this a historic district?
I, I couldn't say what the number is. If 48 is what it is, then that sounds okay.
I'm going to ask our architect, Dan, can, can you bring up?
Oh, 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 time now, time now.
Wait, hey.
Let, let, let Barbara control this. Go ahead.
Okay. That's, that's like, do we really need to go down this path? We understand your, we understand what Mr. Caris, what your viewpoint is. We understand what our planner's viewpoint is. Okay. And it's not like I, I, I really feel, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jack. I'm not seeing that, 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 that Mr. Caris is going to convince Donna of something and Donna is going to convince Mr. Caris of something.
No, she actually, the convincing is to the board. The board has to accept one side of the story or one, one claim of how it reads and what, what the effects are of, by either Mr. Caris or by the board planner. And if.
And the impact is significant.
Well, the, the impact is significant because if it's determined that it is a historic zone or that the building is properly, uh, within a historic designation, then, then we have an issue with the windows that were taken down. Uh, because then you get into that whole thing where things should be replaced, not re, not, not, uh, not repaired, not replaced. But again, and you know, the, the ultimate determination as to which side of, of the issue you're going to come out on is yours as a board.
That's why there's certain documentation I want to present to the board from the National Historic Register. So this way I can make a record in the event I have to take this up on appeal.
There's nothing wrong with making a proper record. That's fine.
And Dan, can you bring up, can you screenshot?
While you're doing that, we have a hand raised by Rick Lambert, Barbara.
Oh, yeah.
Hi, Rick. Hi, this is Rick. So I thought at the last meeting, it was portrayed clear to us that the changes that were made to the facade with the window replacement, the door replacement had been approved by, um, the city because, you know, in the drawings that were presented, it, it met the requirement. So I, I, I don't know why we're like rehashing this. I thought that had already been decided.
The entire amended report from the planner talks about the standards that we were not complying with.
So it, the, the, we, we did not take, we did not recommend whether or not the, the construction official that issued the permit did it properly or improperly. We just, we just clearly stated that, yes, based on the representations made, that in fact, a construction permit for the inclusive of, in the plans that were submitted were the removal of these windows. We're not, we're not going to pass on the correctness or incorrectness of his actions. That's not, we don't have any, we don't have any authority to do that.
Right.
But subsequent to that, the, the, the issue is still out there, whether or not this is historic or not. And, and our staff has taken the position that it is and the reasons set forth in their report are there. And Mr. Caris has his own opinion as to that. He's going to present his evidence and you as a board have to make a decision, uh, which direction you're going to go in on that. You know, you, you decide the issue, not me, not Mr. Caris and not, not Donna. It's the board's decision.
I may, Dan, can you go to page three of this?
Not under oath yet. You want him to testify?
No, I'm just, what I'm going to do is I'll present it. It's going to be A4. And let's put.
He's going to speak at all, Andy. I want him under oath. If Dan is going to speak, he has to be under.
Yeah, let's put him under oath. Yeah, let's put him under oath.
Okay. Barbara, if I may? Okay, Dan, condor, please. I don't see you, but please raise your right hand and tell me you've done so.
Yes, I have.
Okay, Dan, do you solemnly swear a testimony about giving this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And you are the architect of record in this case and have testified in connection with this case and many others before the board, and you are still so licensed as an architect in the state of New Jersey?
That's correct.
Okay, go right ahead, Andy.
Thank you.
Dan, as part of your research in this, you were able to pull up and research the national or the registration of the district as the National Historic District, am I correct?
That's correct.
What we have on the screen that we've identified is A4 is the uh, application in order to make it a registered district or a historic district, am I correct?
Yes.
All right, can we go to page three of this document? Right there. If you look at this document, it indicates that there are 48 contributing properties and 12 non-contributing to make this a historic district, am I correct?
Yes.
And on the category, it doesn't indicate, there's a list or a space to indicate a structure, but that's not what's checked off, the district itself, am I correct?
That's correct, yes.
During your research, were you able to find anything to indicate that the structure itself at 649 Madison, the structure was listed on any state or national historic register?
Uh, I, I did look, and I cannot find any indication of that.
Okay, can you go to page 37 of this document, please?
This one?
Can you, yeah, can you increase the size of that a little bit?
Sure.
Okay, right there. Am I correct? This document reflects the actual historic district in the downtown that's on the National Historic Register, am I correct?
Yes.
And it indicates with a C, according to the legend, all the contributing properties, am I correct?
Yes.
And as we look up and down Cookman Ave, it's nearly all of them that are contributing, am I correct?
Yes.
And if we look on there, there's actually one that says NR National Register, and that is the Steinbeck Building, am I correct?
Yes.
There's no other property that is listed as an actual historic registered property on the National Register on this document, am I correct? What I'd like you to do is, can you pull up also the master plan for Asbury Park, most recent master plan?
Are you going to ask the architect to give you quotes? Why don't you, as the attorney, you can make the representations as to what the master plan says. I don't want to hear it from the architect. I want to hear it from you.
Yeah, I just want him to go to page. My ability to screen share is extremely limited. That's the reason I have him doing it. You can go to page 82 of this document. Okay. If we look at page 82, it lists on this, uh, document third from the bottom, Mercant's National Bank, 649 Madison Avenue, with the designation D next to it. Dan, can you go to the next page where the legend is? Oh, by the way, before we get to that, go back a second. And it says on there, Monmouth County Historic Sites Inventory. Go to the next page, please. On the legend D, it indicates eligible as part of a recommended historic district. So it recognizes that the district is historic, the property is eligible, but the property itself is not on any register. When we looked at the 48 properties in the downtown that are on this historic register, I would ask anybody to let me know, aside from the Steinbeck Building, a single property in which this board has required that the Department of Interior standard rehabilitation guidelines be applied. And I would venture to guess not a single one has been, uh, or not a single property has been required to comply with those guidelines. To say now that this property, which sits within the same category as these other 47 buildings in the downtown, is now all of a sudden required as a historic property to comply with those guidelines is misguided. That's all I have. And I think the board has to make a determination whether or not those Department of Interior standards of rehab apply to this property because it affects how the board's going to make a determination as to what we are proposing with this application.
This is Jen Souter. I have a quick question. Can I ask a question now?
Sure.
Um, but if, if those properties are shown as contributing, my understanding is that's what makes up the historic district, is the contributing, um, elements of those. Otherwise, you wouldn't have a district. You'd only have the one, the whole point of the historic district is that you have contributing factors making up the district. It doesn't mean that every building has to be registered in order to have a historic district, otherwise.
Well, what it does, it makes it eligible in order to get, uh, historic tax credits. It doesn't make the property in and of itself on the register. It has to do with whether or not you're eligible to get historic tax credits. And then based upon whether or not you want to do that in terms of the financing of the property, then you can go ahead and proceed to do certain things.
Right, but when, if you had, if everything that was contributing just was, um, rehabbed into something that retains none of its historic character, then you would have a district, um, you would have, you wouldn't have a historic district.
Right, I agree. That's exactly it. I mean, it has elements that contribute to the overall character of the historic district. And if you start to redo things or renovate things or rehab things, then it loses that architectural character, then it doesn't contribute. So it definitely has an impact.
You've done that with probably the, I'd say, the majority of the 48 buildings. You have never once applied those standards.
Not once.
Once you have.
Maybe pre.
All right, let's let the chairwoman talk.
Sorry.
Whatever, there are many things that have happened in this city prior to today, and how things have been handled, whether they've been handled properly or not improperly. Um, I think that we have to move forward as to how we want things to be considered going forward. And.
Yeah, but you also have to look at your CBD redevelopment.
I agree with our, with both Ms. Souter and Mr. Lambert, that if all of our computed, contributing structures started having all the historical value removed, you have no historical district. So I don't think that anything having to do with, well, this is the first. I think that we're hitting a lot of firsts in these past couple of years within Asbury Park, where we're paying closer attention to what reality is and what it should be. That's just a statement.
You, you can't ignore the specific language within your CBD redevelopment plan that says structures, not the district. It could very well have said the buildings or the contributing buildings within the historic district. It doesn't. It says structures that are on the national or his, or state historic register. These structures are not, and there's a designation specifically to place a structure on the national or state register. And these were not done, these properties. Only one was done.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
I think the issue's been explored to its nth degree, and I think it's, it's, it's up to the board to make the decision as to which direction they want to go on this one, or they feel is accurate.
Well, if they, does that mean that, that we have to poll the board, or how do we?
Yeah, we're going to have to get a vote because this issue will, however, whichever way it goes, will determine how the rest of the ca, the case is put forth before the board.
Okay, I'm, I'm very willing to have a, have a vote taken on that statement.
Well, if, if we're going to have a vote, I think.
It's one of two issues. It's one of two issues. The other issue is whether or not there's a stop. We've already got permits.
We're not going to, we're not going to, we're not going to decide an estoppel issue. We don't do that, Andy. That's a court that decides that. We know that that's going to be an argument of yours if you took this to court, that there's an estoppel issue. But we don't make that determination whether or not we're stopped. No, we don't do that.
Mike, you were, you were trying to say something?
Yeah, if we're going to force a vote on this issue, I think we need to understand what the ramifications are, if we vote one way or the other on this.
Okay, I'll do that. I'll do that.
On this application, yeah.
Okay, i- if we, if we vote in favor of Mr. Charis, we'll start with him, because he was the first one to go. Um, then the, there is real, there was no issue, uh, regarding those doors as far as I, as, as I can see it. Because then you got a permit, there's nothing in the plan that says that shouldn't, that those doors should not have been taken out. They should have been repaired, or windows. Uh, and we move forward with what's before us on that basis. If we, uh, opt for agreeing with our planner, and the planner's report that in fact this building is historical, then the historic guidelines within the plan, uh, and the law apply, which are that they, those windows should not have been removed, and, uh, that the window should have been repaired versus replaced. And we proceed with that in mind, that they were taken out improperly. Then we, we go on an appeal. If there's an appeal, that Mr. Charis is certainly going to argue his point regarding the historic designation or not. And secondly, he's going to argue in a stoppel issue that he has a valid building permit issued by the construction official, and the plans that were submitted included showing these being removed, that the construction official granted that permit, and the city should be stopped because the applicant relied on the issuance of that permit to their detriment and did the work, and that the city should be stopped from denying, uh, the validity of that permit.
Understood, so.
Yeah.
Maybe there's another question that hasn't been resolved here, which is whether or not the doors and window replacement on the Madison Avenue frontage is part of this application or not? Right, because.
It will be. If, if you determine, if, if you determine that CCH's position is correct, then the doors do become an issue. If you determine that Charis is correct, you say, okay, then it's not an issue anymore. And unless, unless, uh, either Donna or Andy want to jump in and tell me I've mischaracterized the issue, that's fine. Uh, they, they can, they're free to do so. Okay.
Right, because, because I, I do feel that the, whether the permits were, you know, rightfully approved or not approved, that is not for us to, that's not part.
No, that's not us. That's not us. That's for another, that's for another.
But I guess, I guess if we're agreeing that that's not planning board jurisdiction, then couldn't we still apply the historic guidelines to this building for this application, which would not include the doors and windows?
No, no, because that's what the direct conflict is. If, the, the, the whole argument here is that the historic guidelines apply or they don't apply, and they're specifically, the, the biggest rub here has been the doors and the windows at the very, from, from the beginning of the case. There may be other issues.
It can be bifurcated in this sense, where we can get a determination as to whether or not the doors and windows um, were properly done, or if the board's going to require something different at, other than what was done. And then also on the second floor, because the second floor, because it's a new addition, that new addition doesn't require any compliance with the Department of Interior standard of rehabilitation.
We, we can't, yeah, I agree, but we can't make the determination whether or not.
It doesn't require. It's part of the standards. It's one of the various.
Well, we'll get to that, but, but, we'll, we'll get to that, Donna. One second. Let me just interject here that we cannot make the determination whether or not the building is official, properly or improperly issued the report, the, the, the permit. That's not what we're going to do.
Agreed.
So we don't get to that. We have to, uh, Don is correct. There may be other elements of this project, I said that before, that must comply with the historic guidelines. I don't know that yet because we've been primarily focused on these doors, the front, the front facade. So that's still to be determined. And if Donna says it is, okay, all right, then you say it isn't, then we're going to have another issue. But right now, it's really the, the focal point has been with, uh, the primary emphasis has been on the doors and whether or not the structure is, you know, if the structure is determined not to have to comply with the historic guidelines, then the entire structure has to, with, as long as the new construction portion of it is included in that. And Donna will say yes, and perhaps she'll say no. I don't know that yet. We'll find out. But that's, that's how I see the case evolving.
I, I may have a, an answer to this. I've been trying to find this answer, and I can't believe it's actually taking this long. I found two sources related to the US Department of Interior on this topic, that state. Hang on, let me go back. I don't know how you want me to share this.
Well, I want to know what your source is.
But I have, I have two, I have found two sources that state as part of the, hang on, let me find that title of it. Part of the fact sheet.
I would have to know the basis for the source.
Yeah, you got to tell me the source.
Well, I have to, I have to figure out how to share it with, with everybody so they can see it, but.
I could stop, I have to stop sharing.
Probably. I've got it on the wrong computer. That's my other problem. It's a physical thing as well. Um, so hang on a second. It's strict. I want to get the wording exactly. A property listed as a contributing structure within the district is on the National Register, just as much as if it were listed individually. That's a, a response to a question.
I'm going to check.
Where does that come from? I need to know the source.
Fact sheet issued by.
What is a fact sheet from whom?
The National Register of Historic Places, the USDA. The guys that actually do the list.
And that's an official response?
Yes.
We got to see it.
I, I, I understand, and I have a second one from the National Register Bulletin. What is the date of this? Revised for Internet, 1995, which also states that properties in a, in a district, I'll get the exact wording, but. Come on. So I don't know if you want to take a break for a second, and I can, I can forward these copies to you, Jack, or something, and, and, um, and Andy, so he can see them and, and enter that information.
And will you then be able to post them? Will you be able to put them up?
Well, it would be Irina. If you could send them to Irina, Irina can.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, can you, uh, forward the links to me?
It's actually perform this. That's.
All right, well, sure.
Okay, so I know this is the, the actual thing we're trying to resolve, so I don't want to, you know, we're kind of holding up.
No, but it's, it's okay. We've got to do this. It's, it's, you're not holding anything up. It's just a matter of it has to be addressed because this is a focal point in the case.
Okay, uh, all right, so Irina, I'm going to email this to you first.
All right, can we have whoever is sharing to stop sharing so that Irina can, um, share?
Thank you, Dan.
All right, this one's really big. I'm having trouble, um, with the size. It's not going to go through the email.
Can you just send me the link to the site?
Uh, yeah, I'm going to try, but again, because it's such a big, I hope you may not find the page. I have to, I have to figure out how the paging is working.
Okay.
Because it was a scan that they've got listed on the, on the, uh, there's a link in the website, so. I wonder if I can, oh, yeah, but then if I can't send it. Sorry.
If it's a PDF that you opened from the site in your browser, you can copy and paste the browser address in an email to me.
Hi, sweetie, bye. Bye. Oh. One. Oh.
Donna, you could also do a screen print and put it into an email just for that one page.
I want to be able to read the entire thing, not just one page, I want the context.
That's the thing, I I know you're going to want the whole thing.
Okay, we're we're now in a in a situation that that we're, we're showing evidence uh on the fly. I I don't know if we're going to be able to get that information over to Andy. Um, properly.
We'll have to at some point before.
No, absolutely.
No, I'm just saying you're going to have to because that could very well uh have some serious value in both his opinion and or Donna's opinion.
Uh huh.
And your decision.
Okay, I got something. Okay. So this is the fact sheet. But this is the state of Connecticut, Department of Economic.
Republished fact sheet. From Connecticut, and the thing I just sent you is the link of the sixty-page bulletin. From.
This is Connecticut. What does Connecticut have to do with us?
I'm, I just said, this is republished fact sheet from the state of Connecticut, but it's the.
National.
Taken from the national. The thing I'm sending Irina now is the sixty-page bulletin. From USDA, so I'm not sure how she's going to show that.
Well, first, let's uh find what's uh should be shown on this page.
Um, so this. Says, the register does not restrict the rights of private property owners in use development or sale of private historic property. Does not require that properties be maintained, repaired, or restored. Does not lead to historic district zoning or landmark designation.
What number um were you referring to, Donna? Do you, am I showing it on the screen?
Hang on, I'm just attached something else. Shoot, it's not the right thing.
Wait, you just, can you go back?
I think you can go back up, I think you just passed something.
Keep going.
Keep going, right here, right here, hold on, hold on. Here it is.
Yeah. So I just sent another um fact sheet.
Of this.
To Irina that contains a question, a thing about um district enlisting, and it references. National Register Bulletin fifteen, section eight. Um, which goes into greater detail about contributing pop, contributing properties. Um, and whether they're considered listed or not, so um.
Uh, is it this?
They're listed as.
Is it within this document?
But unless.
Well, this is.
As contributing, but the structure itself, the property owner has to agree for the structure itself to be on there.
See what it says.
As an individually listed property.
That's part of, that's part of the district application process. Once it becomes a designated district, I mean, before it becomes a designated district, there's a time period for property owners to ask to be. Withdrawn if they don't agree. Once that's.
No, 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 no.
The district is established.
Why don't we get there?
No, a majority, a majority of the prop, if if the majority of property owners within a proposed district object. The district then doesn't get named as a historic district. However, for an individual property, a structure to be listed on the national or state register. The property owner has to agree for that property to be on the register. That has never been done.
May I say something?
That's the law.
May I, may I say something? So what, what Mr. Karas just says would defeat what the city wanted to do, right? So if the city has said that this is a historic district and these are contributing properties, and at least I know from New York. In historic districts, you 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 can't change anything on a contributing property. But here, the city has said, this is a historic district, and these are the contributing properties that make it a historic district. And we want to maintain those contributing factors and buildings. Mr. Kara says, but each individual owner, he's saying, well, you can't force us to do that unless we're on the, unless we're on the National Register. But the property owner themselves, he says, has to agree to be on the property, to be on the register. So the, so the city is powerless then, in his words, because the owner could say, I don't want to be on the register even though I'm in the historic district, so.
Change the.
So you can't make me, you can't make me, you, let me finish, you can't make me. Maintain my historic elements and my contributing building. I mean, it just makes no sense.
It does because you're required to comply with the redevelopment plan and the language that's set forth in redevelopment plan. You can't make stuff up. You just can't. You can't give an interpretation just making stuff up. Your plan is very specific. It says structures, not structures within a district, a historic district. It says structures that are on either the national or state reg.
You're muted, Donna.
This structure is on you.
Well, well, what we just read is that it's redundant, right? And if you're contributing building in a historic district. You're just as good as an individually listed. You can't be individually listed unless the property owner agrees to it. So you could, so any property owner, so the city is powerless. This, the the property owner can defeat the historic preservation efforts of the city of Asbury Park under your definition.
It it's under the definition of the CBD redevelopment plan, change the plan.
Okay, okay, that's, all right, let's stop. Barbara, go ahead.
No, Eric Cass is standing up. He has not had a chance to speak.
I guess I I, my question would be, at what point? Um, and Mr. Karas, uh, I'm, I'm not trying to be impolite, but at what point do we need a, somebody qualified as an expert? To testify on behalf of your client?
I don't, it requires a, an interpretation of what you're, you, nobody wants to look at your redevelopment plan. Look at your redevelopment plan, look what the plain language of the redevelopment plan says. All right, what you're, you're taking a redevelopment plan. All right, that has very specific language in there when you apply it, it says the structures on the national or state register. It doesn't state structures that are contributing to a nat, to a historic district. It talks specifically, keep in mind, there are different standards within your, your redevelopment plan. There are those pertaining to historic uh structures. And there are then with the U E Z guidelines, you have guidelines that still apply. I'm not saying guidelines don't apply, it's which guidelines apply within your U E Z guidelines.
I I understand, I understand.
And there's no guideline.
I'm not trying to be combat, I'm not trying to be combative here. Um, but it does seem to me that there is a difference of opinion. I have, I have my own opinion about what this is, and that would be that structures that are with, that are contributing to a historic district. Especially if we're led to believe that, you know, if you could just slowly degrade them over time, then at what point does the district stop being meaningful? And so there. Hold up, hold up, may I, I'm sorry.
Let him finish.
May I, may I, so, so I, I I'm curious if. You know, it it seems that you were providing us a a level of testimony that may. Be best presented by somebody who is an expert in historic preservation.
Jackie, Jack, you were going to be, you were going to be bringing something up?
Um, no.
Before Eric started?
No, no, no.
Okay.
You know, you you can't change the rules of the game.
I'm not trying to.
But all the game, you are because you've had, when you look at what I showed you of all those contributing properties. All those properties up and down the street have been renovated. Every one of them. And not once, aside from the one that's on the National Historic Register, the structure itself, not a single property. Has been sub- uh subjected to the standard for rehab by the Department of the Interior, not a single property. Except one on the historic register.
Mr. Lambert, you wanted something? No, you're, you're muted.
Yeah, so um, I mean, don't we have the power as the planning board to set standards? That we want to see, I mean, we do it for all properties, any, any application, we say, we want this to happen. So don't we have the power to say, this is a contributing structure? The elements that made it a contrib- contributing structure were, you know, A, B, and C, and they should be retained. I mean, don't we have that power?
We always have to go to a source of law that says what are, what we do. And in this case, it would be Donna's report.
But it's part of the historic district, and it's a contributing structure, then it falls within those guidelines, and we can say, this is how.
Yeah, well, you're going to apply, then you would apply the historic guidelines for the uh, for the facade and possibly for the upper floors, uh, the upper floor. You could certainly do that, but that would be based on Donna's review, her firms to having done the work and coming up with a, an opinion that says. That this property must comply with the, and it's listed and through the, through the mechanism that's in place. And that the these guidelines in fact do apply. Andy's saying they don't apply. And the fact, one of the, well, could be embarrassing here is the fact that if it turns out that they should have applied to those other properties within that district. Uh, then somebody has to, then somebody has to answer some questions as to why we weren't aware of that. But uh, you know, that it it could very well turn out that that's the case. I don't know. I I I don't know this. This is not, I do, this my, this is either we have to accept Mr. Paris's position. Or we accept CCH's position because there doesn't seem to be a third position or a solemn like approach, Solomon-like approach that we can come up with. Uh, a viable alternative.
Uh, Mr. Mayor Moore is, has his hand raised.
Okay.
Yeah, um. Andy, you you said to go to the CBD plan, and I'm strumming through it, is there a certain page I should be looking for because I can't find anything that's relevant to like what you're saying?
Yeah, Mayor, on uh page thirteen of the redevelopment plan are the design guidelines. Now, keep in mind, the, what you have is page thirteen that talks about the guidelines, and then. At the end of the CBD redevelopment plan, you have the U E Z guidelines that are broken up. Into buildings within the CB, now, keep in mind, it talks about buildings in the CBD that are not historic structures. And buildings that are historic structures. Why would you have separate guidelines in a sense if almost all your buildings, forty-eight out of the sixty, are historic? Doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, thank you.
I have, Donna, could you unmute yourself? You're, you're still muted.
Donna, you're muted.
Okay, Donna, have you, have you found this bulletin, this, that you were, the second one you were saying that was more specific?
That was the link I sent to Irina, the sixty-page.
And which which page should she go to?
It's uh, hang on, hang on. It's supposed to be in. Section eight, but I don't have the exact page.
Irina, can you uh see if you can find that? You're muted, Irina, just so you know.
Yep, okay, let me pull it up, and then Donna, you can just tell me when, when to stop if you see it.
Looks like it's somewhere around page forty-four, maybe.
You said it's section eight?
Yeah.
Did I miss it?
No, no, she said around forty, page forty-four.
Page twenty-four.
Roughly in that area. I were.
Where did he, okay. Okay. Sorry. All right.
All right, that's section eight right there.
This is it, page forty-four.
Yeah, and and.
Section eight.
That's the thing, it's a reference from the fact sheet that says to go to the bulletin to find that information, so. Haven't read through the whole thing, so I haven't actually found it.
Yeah, also, by the way, uh, in the, in the plan, in this, in this CBD redevelopment plan. Uh, it's, it calls that the merchant bank a historic site. On page sixteen.
Yeah, but you're ignoring the language that says structures on the national or historic register. Shall be subject to the Department of Interior's standard of rehab.
You have to find the language within the redevelopment.
So, here's my opinion, I don't think we're going to solve it tonight. And if this application really hinges on this decision, I don't think we're going to make it tonight. I think we need someone to ask the National Register of Historic. To to define what exactly is a structure? Is a contributing building within a district considered a structure on the national historic? And if the answer is yes, then the CBD clear plan clearly says that this building would apply, and if the answer is no, then it doesn't. But I don't, I don't think we have enough information to make a decision.
I think that's a good idea, Mike.
Andy?
Just give me one second, please.
Sure.
I just want to talk to my colleagues.
Go. You know, and 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 it goes on, you know, part three, historic preservation, historic elements that still exist must be retained and maintained. If alterations have occurred, new work should strive to reverse inappropriate alterations. That's in. That's in the the U E Z's own design guidelines. Could you repeat that again? I'm sorry, I was looking, I was making.
That's our, that's our requirement, that's the U E Z guidelines.
All right, but what, what did you say, Daniel? Okay, so it's, 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 if you, if you look at, it's a page fifteen of part three, PDF page. Okay, so it's, 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 if you, if you look at, it's a page fifteen of part three, PDF page forty-one. Of the redevelopment plan? Yes, and it's, it's historic elements that still exist must be retained and maintained. If alterations have occurred, new work should strive to reverse inappropriate alterations. Eliminate modernization that has been made in store fronts. Especially facades that have been covered with a different material. Goes on. Hold on, is that, okay, he muted himself, go ahead.
I muted him, sorry.
Thank you. I mean, I'm sorry, Dan. I, I mean, it just goes on, avoid modernization, then it goes on to the Secretary of the Interior's standard for rehabilitation. I mean, it's, it's.
Exactly, and that's what we're, we're trying to determine is whether or not the Secretary of Interior, there those standards apply because it would only, those standards only apply when you go to page thirteen of your redevelopment plan. If the structures on the National or State Historic Register. So you only apply that if it's on the historic register.
By your definition, it's one property. By your definition, it's one property. By your definition, it's one property, and any property owner can defeat the historic preservation if it's of the city. Because they can refuse to be put on the, the register. To be put on the register has to be voluntary by the property owner. So, I mean, I think you're reading between the intent, the spirit of the, the way it was written. Okay.
Then out of forty-eight properties within the downtown, it's never been applied, so.
We may have been doing it wrong.
Nobody has tried.
No, it's not only me that's applying it. It's been the way the city and the boards in the city.
I get that.
I did for the past twenty years.
I get that, I get that.
Like a new day.
I think Michael Manzella's got the right idea. Can, who, where do we go to get the, you know, not diminishing the power of the knowledge of Donna or Randy and his staff? Where do we go, Donna's raising her hand, where do we go to get an answer that's impartial? And right down the middle, and then we'll know, as Michael said, is it?
There are qualified experts in historic preservation.
Secretary of the Interior.
I, I, I mean, there are, there are multiple qualified experts in historic preservation. I have myself in, testified in front of the State Historic Preservation Office, and we bring a historic preservationist with us.
There's present, there's Professor Dohart from Columbia University, who's very.
Yeah, we also, there's many in New Jersey.
You know, we, we used one for Tim and Bill, that we have experts, we can bring one in.
But, but Jack, also what's part of it is, you know, as you know, things are not the best written, right? When you even make a redevelopment plan, right? So.
It always needs to be.
What was the spirit, you know, your lawyers fight about it all the time. What did it mean? What was this, what was the intent of, of the language? So is the intent of the language in our thing to strictly uh, limited to properties that individually on the historic register? Or all contributing properties that are within a historic district?
Well, look at what's been done in the past.
We have a director of redevelopment and a planning firm that represents the board that says uh, there, there to.
The intent.
The intent, it's the, says what the intent is.
But then you have for twenty years where it's never been applied, the intent has never been to apply.
I get that, I get that, I understand what you're saying. That certainly could be factual. But that doesn't mean that it's, we've been doing it right.
Mm-hmm. And many people on this board were not on the board twenty years.
We don't know that yet. We don't know whether we've been doing.
Well, and where, if I may, where I was trying to go earlier was as a board, we may decide that this, you know, this application, the, the guidelines apply, historic guidelines. But regardless, a permit was issued to replace the windows. So why couldn't we bifurcate? That's what I, I'm still struggling with.
How do you mean bifurcate? How are we gonna bifurcate this?
Well, isn't, isn't, is this application not primarily for the addition of, of a, of a story?
But, but that addition would be subject to the Department of Interior standards for additions to historic structures if we determine it to be historic.
Yes, and what are you suggesting? How do we, but I still don't understand how you're.
What Mike is saying is that we can we can evaluate the addition without evaluating the renovation on the ground floor. And that's kind of a yes and a no, because some of the things they need for the third floor occur at the ground level. You know, the elevator rate, that doesn't affect the front doors, it doesn't affect the front windows. But it does affect ground floor.
Right, but I guess my point is the, the windows specifically received a permit.
Well.
Then, are you suggesting we just ignore that? If we're ignoring that, we're right back to where we, we, we can move forward. If that's what the board wants to do.
I, I just can't see.
Board decision.
Right, but, but that it's we, we've received strong feelings from prior meetings that the board is not pleased with the type of windows that were fully replaced as opposed to repaired. We know that.
Yeah.
So, in theory, we could move forward, un- understanding that that permit was issued. Whether we feel it's an error or not, it was issued. But remember that even if we move forward, we as a board can say, yes, we approve this application, but we want those windows modified. We can still do that. If that's what we wanna do.
Quick pro quo. Well, then you're saying that debate, you would have to have a basis for that, and the basis would be that you believe these historic guidelines apply. There's your empowerment.
Right, but, but also that this, it was not a hardship to keep those windows.
Well, yeah, it's interesting because the applicant said early on that it was just a renovation, but then they also stated that they made the changes to put more light into the second floor because they wanted to put they needed more light coming into the structure, so it's, it's a conflict in what they said versus what their intent was.
Uh, yeah, but that has nothing to do with the window.
I, I don't understand that.
Right, we still, we still have to.
No, we're getting lost in the weeds.
Right, we still have to figure out how are we gonna move forward on this application.
Exactly.
The mayor has his hand up.
Can I, can I do this?
I don't know if he still has his hand up from last time, or if he, it's a new hand. Mayor, is that an old?
Mayor Moore is.
Oh, no, it's an old hand.
I think it is.
Can I have my client sworn he'd like to make a few statements concerning this?
Hmm. Uh, I don't know if that's really gonna.
Preservation specialist.
Well, yeah, is he a preservation specialist?
No, but I mean, he's had significant experience developing the downtown for quite a while.
But, but, Andy, if, if we're gonna go down that path for twenty years, we've been doing this, this, and this, and we've been doing it wrong.
No, we're not, we're not, I'm just indicating that he can speak to the issue, which may be able to come to a resolution a little faster.
Okay.
Board's pleasure.
Yeah.
Okay, let's get him sworn. Carter, please raise your right hand, you solemnly swear your testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And please state your name for the record and your affiliation with the applicant.
Carter Backman, Principal.
Okay, you can go right ahead.
Okay, listen, I, 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 I agree with what was said earlier. Um, you know, I, it seems very clear to me, everybody has very, you know, strong feelings about where they feel is right and wrong on, on this issue. Um, you know, look, my intent um, is certainly to preserve structures in the CBD. Um, I, I think that, that is certainly the case. There's, there are certain elements that come, that come into play that are physically structural problems where, you know, maybe the integrity of the structure could not could not have been, um, salvaged. This is a a case where, you know, we thought we were filing this CBD, obviously this is where there's become, you know, a little gray area, I guess, and on how it's interpreted. What, what I would suggest is what exactly is the consensus of the board that they would see as a remedy for the storefront? And then maybe taking a better look at your CBD plan to maybe, in the, you know, maybe we work together on a solution on this. And then we spend the time in correcting or amending the CBD so that the next applicant doesn't have to go through an interpretation that at best is extremely gray. Um, and is very clear cut, because I think you had one board member that was confused about whether or not you can, you know, you can regulate some of the design elements and everything in your district, you absolutely can, it's just that our interpretation is that the, the CBD plan doesn't at this point, at, at the level I think this board wants it to. And so notice ahead of, of construction is always important for a principal or developer or anybody looking to improve his asset. So again, first question is, is what is a board? What is, if anything can be done with the front that they'd like to see, and if that's the case, maybe there's a concession on design standards applied, but later amended so that those concerns of the board are addressed clearly in the plan.
Okay.
So I would pose that to the board.
Well, I know that, I know that in the, in the past, in our prior discussions, um, I know that very specifically, and I hate to do this to you, Alexis, but I know that we've had, you've, you've brought up in the, in prior discussions, um, exactly what, uh, what was changed. Uh, not repaired, but replaced, um, on those front windows. And that, that what could we do in order to make it more palatable? From what? I mean, it, it was removed, we already understand everything was removed. We need to understand what would make this more palatable to us. And I was wondering if you had, could put any insight in there?
Uh, so definitely, there was a horizontal lintel that actually broke up. Um, the, you know, main window from what is then kind of the arched window at the top. Um, and I thought that that horizontality ma- mattered. Um, my only question, and again, this goes back to, you know, like authority, but does the planning board a, a construction official approved it? Does the planning board have the right to make whatever remedy or suggestion that they?
Yes.
Choose.
Yeah, we've got an applicant that's uh, dropped a, a, uh, uh, a peace offering, essentially, okay? And it's up to the board to decide what would make it worthwhile to come up with a third alternative as opposed to what's there and what was there originally that would make it acceptable to the board, and we can move on. The construction official, we don't care what the construction official did at that point, the applicant is willing to forget about what the construction official did, he's willing to give us an olive branch, and let's see what we can come up with that's work, makes it a win-win for both the applicant and the board.
I know that, that Donna, you, you're speaking, but I know that you're muted.
Sorry, I'm, I'm trying to just reconcile for myself that it seems like that's a step ahead. Um, you know, are we considering that action of variance? If so, you know, I need a positive criteria before I.
We'll take care of that.
Negative criteria.
We'll take care of that.
Kind of arguing with myself about that.
We'll take care of all of the, the technical details. Right now, we're obviously looking to make some form of compromise that makes it a win-win, so we don't spend the next year in court.
Right. Right, what, what would the board feel that is something that they could live with, um, on that storefront? Understanding that whatever was done was done. What could we live with?
Well, you know, I think there's a, you know, if I could interject for a moment, I think there's a range of remedies that range from the minimal, which would be to repaint the mullions to a white color, the existing already changed mullions to a white color, which does nothing to change the, what has been done. You know, that would be a kind of approach that would go to trying to match the color scheme that was a consistent element of the lower parts of the building. But then there is, you know, ranging to the more extreme, which be, would be removal of um, what has been put in and a restoration of the what I would say the kind of unique idiosyncratic, um, pedimentation of those windows. Now, um, there are some there are readily available historic pictures of that building showing um, one door and two windows rather than two doors and one window on that facade. Um, and so it's a question of how far do you go? Um, and I, I, you know, I'm not sure what the right answer is, um.
Uh, Rick, you have something also?
Yeah, I'd like to kind of speak to what Eric says, so I think it's unfortunate that the inspector or whoever approved the drawings approved them the way they were done. And I, as much as I would like to see all the original millwork still in place, I think the applicant made a good faith effort to do what was approved. They, I don't think they did anything that was out of context. I mean, they, you know, they submitted drawings, and they were approved, and they, they worked within those confines. I like Eric's suggestion, then maybe doing the mullions in a bike that kind of mimics what's going on. At least kind of blends the new with the old, because I, I mean, as, as much as I would like to see the original details there, I really think it's, um, it's really not right for us to expect the applicant to restore everything that was taken down when they did everything according to what was approved. It's just really, it's just really.
That gets us halfway there.
Can I make a suggestion? You guys have a D R C, have the Design Review Committee, let us come up with some stuff.
Yeah, right.
Let's get before the Design Review Committee to try to work through it.
I think that's a good idea.
I mean, you, you know what we want. I mean, you know, the best of the worlds, we'd want all the, we'd want all of the elements back again, but why don't you just come up with something and see what you're willing to do, and see if we like it?
We schedule before the Design Review Committee, we'll come up with a few different options, things that we can try to get done.
Okay, Super can go from there.
And, and I'll just, I just want to thank, thank everyone. I, I know this is like, uh, you know, it's, it's a I, 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 I hear everybody's concern in the district. And, and there's beautiful buildings in this district and wanting to preserve it. I, I just you know, the thought, and, and when we went about it, excluding, you know, how it all happened, um, that building was not activated for five years, and prior to that had multiple turnovers uh, and short periods of time. And so a lot of what dictated with the glazing with the old is not a non-typical event that you see with historic structures, I just wanna be clear on that. Um, somebody brought up Manhattan, it's, it's, you've seen it very commonly done in, in some bank buildings there, it's not uncommon, what we did at five seventy-four Cookman on Cook, you know, with the new window fronts. So having that glazing and reactivating those type of buildings, you know, I thought we were accentuating the remaining, um, uh, you know, masonry aesthetics to the facade, so it was done with all the best of intent. I just wanted to say that. And maybe we'll come up with a bunch of ideas, you know, we could certainly maybe trim out over the mullions, we can do some things to beef it up and colors, there's, there's certainly probably a couple directions we can go in that we can present and see how it's, how, how it's viewed.
My, my, I see. What was, what was done did not come out of left field, you actually have within your U E Z guidelines something about ground floor storefronts and putting glazing in there to make them storefronts seventy to seventy.
Yeah, but it also says you should not, you should avoid modernization.
I'm just talking about, but you have, so you have different conflicting sections within your U E Z guidelines, it's not as though.
They're not, they're not.
That's not left field.
We don't agree that they're in conflict.
I don't think we should get in a back and forth and argue.
No, no, I, I.
As a member of the.
It gives you the benefit of forty-four years of settling matters, okay?
Uh, on the, as a, as a member of the D R C, I would just encourage you to kind of bracket your solutions. Start with something that's the most minimal. Give us something in the middle and something on the end. Don't like, don't, don't overwhelm us.
Yeah, we'll come, we'll come back with a few.
Bracket, bracket your solutions.
Why not?
You clearly understand what our concerns are.
Why not allow the board to have some input in that process by going to the committee? Rather than just the applicant coming up with two or three, then you're gonna come back and you're gonna say, no, I don't like this, I don't like that. But why not use the committee for the purposes intended to get?
That's my, that's my suggestion, that's my suggestion, is when they come to the D R C for the applicant.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
The, that. The, when you come to the DRC, make sure that you have something that represents a range of solutions, something from the minimal to the maximal.
And, and I, you can have, and you'll have my, um, commitment that we will try to get you, as soon as you, you're ready, we will try to get together as quickly as possible.
Absolutely.
For us to do this. And I just wanted to say something to you, Mr. Sackman, that you've been coming here for years. Though I'm not happy with what, what happened here, you do quality work. And we, and you know that we have our best intentions at heart for this city, and as you do as well. This is just something that happened, but I want to thank you for coming forward to helping us resolve.
Thank you. And hopefully, I think we can, we can get to a better place, I believe that, so I think we all want similar goals.
Yes, yes, we do. Thank you. Um, so, uh, so I guess that you all re, reach out to Irina whenever you'd be, you think you'd be ready for a DRC, and then we could get people together and, and move it forward.
Yeah, that's.
Sure, we'll get some dates out to those members. Um, I'm sorry, Barbara, just to interrupt one second, I just wanna make sure Mayor Moore didn't have something to say, and he's able to speak, uh, because he did have to call in.
Okay.
Okay, let's find out.
No, I'm good, can you hear me?
Yeah, okay, just making sure, thank you.
All right, so.
Thank you.
We should, we should, we have to adjourn to a date, certain time and place. We have to address, uh, extension of time under the MLUL, uh, we have to address, uh, notification if required or not. Uh, so let's address those issues.
Uh, what, what would be the next set, Irina, about roughly? Are we into March at this point, or, or what, or at the end of February?
We are into March, uh, March seventh to be exact, but that is the date that you are not available, so.
That's correct.
I'm not sure if you wanted to carry to that date.
If that's okay, if we could carry it to the following meeting, if that would be okay? Because we would also want to handle the DRC uh, in between that time as well? What date would that be, Irina?
Um, just one second, let me pull up the calendar, that would be March twenty-first.
Okay, if you'd like to have it on, if you would like to have it on the seventh, um, then we can do that, I will not be available at that time.
Will be.
Rick would have to run it, um, if you'd like to go the twenty-first, I will be there for that.
Let, let me ask you a question, we'll, we'll do that with the front windows, do we wanna at least present tonight? Just open up more of the discussion about the second floor, the revised plans, so when we go back to the DRC, um, we have any comments then, and we're that much ahead of the game.
Let me, in my personal opinion, uh, we've been here since six. Uh, I think that that's, I think that that's a lot. That's just my opinion. I don't know if somebody else feels differently about it, but since six o'clock, I'm not quite sure how much further our board members can really go. So I would request that we do it, sorry, Mr. Moore?
I said I agree.
So we're already at four hours. I would request that we schedule it, um, on the twenty-first of March.
Is there any?
Come back.
Question, is there any, is there any reason why the applicant couldn't present the revised design at the DRC, including the, the addition?
I'm, I'm gonna, I was just gonna comment, yeah.
Yeah.
Take advantage of the opportunity to come up with the best project you can.
Bring it all. Because we, we wanna get this done, just like you wanna get it done.
No, I, I just figured since we had everybody, start getting comments, but before the DRCs.
I want my pizza.
I have, I have a, I have a tenant that wants to get in, I know some of you know that.
I want some pizza.
Yeah, there's a lot of pressure on him to, to open up.
We can hold the next hearing at the pizza place, that's.
I want pizza.
I like pizza.
Okay, so, uh, Irina, we're, we're, we're scheduling it for the twenty-first. Might I get a motion for the twenty-first with no further notice?
And the consent of the applicant to extend the time within which to decide the case under the MLUL.
No consent.
Thank you.
Move it.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Michael Manzella and a second by Jim Henry. Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Nivon Clayton.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
Rick Lambert.
Yes.
And Barbara Krizak.
Yes.
Thank you, application carried to March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, without further notice.
Okay, and I, and I would ask that for all the DRC members, which are myself, Rick Lambert, Eric, and Alexis, to, uh, keep yourselves as open as we can, or be as flexible as you can, once you get the dates uh, for the DRC, because we'd like to give this a fair shake as quickly as we can.
Yes.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Motion to adjourn.
And, uh, I'm sorry, just before we adjourn, I'm just gonna share on this screen the next, uh, virtual meeting.
Oh, I thought it was gonna be pictures of your baby.
Oh.
That's after that.
Yeah. Uh, so let me just put that on this screen, oops. Okay, so the next virtual meeting of the planning board will be Monday, February seventh, two thousand twenty-two. The information to join the meeting is on the screen, will be available on the City of Asbury Park website, as well as the calendar, as well as posted in the Asbury Park City Lobby. And can I get a motion?
Yeah, I can get a motion. I motioned to adjourn.
Thank you.
I expect I'm having motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you, meeting adjourned, enjoy your evening.
Good night, everyone, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.